Vice Chair Nutter, we are ready to begin.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you please make, have the call roll, Ashley?
Yes. Chair Williams is absent. Vice Chair Nutter?
Present.
Commissioner Nugent?
Here.
Commissioner Patel?
I'm here.
And Commissioner Wiggins?
Here.
Commissioner Patel is joining us from the Holiday Inn Express and Suites Lafayette, 3903 Ambassador Cafaree Parkway, Lafayette, Louisiana, 70503, where an agenda has been posted.
Through the chair, if I may, just make a quick correction. I believe the agenda states that Commissioner Patel is joining from Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. There may have been an error in the script. Ashley, could you please confirm if she's joining from Pennsylvania?
Okay. I'm sorry.
Yes. Commissioner Patel is joining from Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania.
Thank you.
Through the chair, I just wanted to note that I'm unable to start my video due to the host according to the Zoom.
Thank you, Commissioner Patel. The conference ID for this meeting is 858-1579-2601. The passcode is 417083. Good evening and welcome to the meeting this evening. There are several ways to participate. For those attending in person, there are three options to sign up to speak. One is to complete a yellow request to speak slip and hand it to the clerk. Two is to sign in using the iPad at the back of the council chamber, or three, scan the QR code to sign up. The code is located on a sign at the back of the chamber. If participating remotely, use the raise your hand feature in Zoom and you will be called on at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, press star nine to raise your hand, and when called upon, press star six to unmute. These options for public comment remain available until I close the public comment period for that specific item. Ashley, please read the consent calendar.
Yes, Vice Chair Nutter. Item number one, 2191 South El Camino Real and 2195 South El Camino Real, findings of general plan conformance resolution adoption. And item number two, planning commission meeting minutes approval. Approve the minutes of the regular meetings of July 12, 2022, and July 26, 2022, and the special meeting of July 26, 2022.
Thank you. Are there any members of the council who would like to pull an item from the consent calendar? Are there any members of the public wishing to comment on any of the consent calendar items? Now would be the time to make your comment. This is for a consent calendar item only. Anyone online, Ashley?
Yes, Vice Chair Nutter, we have, it looks like we don't have any public commentators right now.
Great. Thank you. We'll close the consent counter. Do we need to vote on it?
Yes, Vice Chair Nutter, we need a vote.
Great. Do we have a first?
I'd like to make a motion to, to vote yes on both consent items.
A second.
So Chair Williams is absent. Vice Chair Nutter?
Yes.
Commissioner Nugent?
Yes.
Commissioner Patel?
Yes.
And Commissioner Wiggins?
Yes.
Thank you. Close that item. Now we'll move on to the public comment period. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda may address the planning commission at this time. State law prevents the commission from taking action on any matter not on the agenda. Your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up. The target limit for public comments is 15 minutes. However, additional time for public comment may be provided and/or time per speaker may be reduced to allow all members an opportunity to speak. Ashley, do we have any members of the public who want to make comments at this time?
Vice Chair Nutter, we have one public commenter via Zoom. What would you like the timer to be?
Two minutes, please.
Tony LeVais, you can go ahead and unmute. Tony, you can go ahead and unmute.
Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you, Tony.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners, staff, and members of the audience. My name is Anthony LeVice, and I have been a carpenter in the Bay Area for over 27 years. I'd like to discuss tonight responsible developers and responsible general contractors that are, that are employed by them. What is a responsible contractor? Responsible contractors, one that pays a living wage, allows our local construction workers the ability to prosper here in San Mateo where they live. We'd like them to work where they live. That is what's best for San Mateo. That keeps those wages in the local economy. A responsible general contractor provides healthcare for his workers, not just for one, but for the family as a whole. This should also include vision and dental as well. These are all things I have enjoyed for so many years as a union carpenter. These developers and general contractors will never do the right thing and pay area standard wages on their own. With your leadership, we can send a message to all developers and the general contractors that they employ that San Mateo will not stand for the exploitation of carpenters, skilled tradesmen, and apprentices so they can increase their profits. I would kindly ask the commission, please consider adopting a requirement that all proposed developers and general contractors, excuse me, pay area standard carpenter wages, provide health coverage, and a commitment to hire local carpenters and tradesmen, including apprentices. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Tony.
Vice Chair Nutter, we have no more speakers at this time.
Are there any speakers in the audience who would like to come forward on an item not on the agenda this evening? We'll close that item. Move on to the public hearing, item three. Do you want to introduce the item?
Yes, Vice Chair Nutter. Item number three, Hayward Park Caltrain Station Parking Lot, new five-story, 191 units, multifamily residential building, PA 2021 33.
Great, thank you. We will start with the staff presentation, followed by applicant presentation clarifying questions from the commission and public comments. The applicant will be given up to 15 minutes to present, and members of the public are given two to three minutes to speak, depending on the number of speakers. The applicant may also be given up to five minutes at the end of the response, at the end to respond to the public comments. Once the public hearing is closed, the commission will deliberate and render a decision on the project. Finally, if a decision is made tonight, the decision of the planning commission can be appealed to the city council within 10 calendar days. Thank you.
Good evening, Vice Chair Ebner Nutter and members of the Plan Commission. Wendy Lau, Associate Planner and Staff Planner for Agenda Item Three this evening, a public hearing for planning application 2021 033, a development proposal at 401 Concord Drive, Hayward Park Caltrain Station Parking Lot. Before I begin my presentation, I wanted to direct you to an additional document for modifications to the proposed conditions of approval that was prepared after the packet was distributed. Copies have been distributed to you at the DIAAS. The item before the commission this evening is for a multifamily residential project, located at West currently the Hayward Park Caltrain Station Parking Lot. The project site is identified by the red outline on the screen. The site is located north of State Route 92 and fronts Concord Drive between the Hayward Park Caltrain Station directly adjacent to the west and Station Park Green Development to the east. For context, to the south across Concord Drive is open space and an office building occupied by WeWork. Further to the east is a shopping center with stores including Trader Joe's and Ross, where the Concord Passage Development Project has been approved. The site is located in the Transit Oriented Development or TOD zoning district where residential use is allowed. The site is also located within the San Mateo Rail Corridor Plan area, specifically the Hayward Park Station TOD subarea. The site is 122,875 square feet, which is equivalent to 2.82 acre. The site currently consists of a surface parking lot with 225 parking spaces for the Hayward Park Caltrain Station. On the screen is an image of the project site. To the left is an image of the Hayward Park Caltrain Station platform, and to the right is the five-story Station Park Green mixed-use development, which includes residential uses. On the bottom of the screen is an image of a four-story office building for WeWork and Open Space, which is located south of the project site across Concord Drive. The project proposes the construction of a five-story residential building totaling 51 feet 6 inches in height. This is within the allowable height limit of 55 feet. The building would have a total floor area of 226,965 square feet, achieving a floor ratio of 1.84. This is within the allowable floor ratio of 3.0. Please note, the staff report contained an error and which stated the floor ratio, floor area, would be 266,965 square feet with a floor ratio of 2.17, which is larger than the actual proposed project. So staff wanted to clarify that for the record. The project proposes 191 apartment units consisting of 17 studios, 119 one-bedroom, and 55 two-bedroom units. This is within the level density of 191 units for the project site. Of these units, 16 would be dedicated to the very low-income category, which meets the city's inclusionary housing program requirements. The applicant also proposes 12 moderate-income units, which staff will discuss in more detail later. The proposed project also consists of 192 residential parking spaces, of which 120 would be in a garage on the ground floor and 72 as an uncovered surface parking lot. This exceeds the state's parking requirements by double the amount. Two ADA spaces would be available for Caltrain users, which staff will also discuss in more details later. Here is an image of the south elevation of the building, fronting Concord Drive. This is an image of the southwest elevation of the building looking north, which would be visible from Caltrain. In this image, Concord Drive is to the right and the train tracks are to the left. This is an image of the northwest elevation of the building looking south, which would also be visible from the train station. And here is an image of the northeastern elevation of the building looking south, which would also be visible from Station Park Green. On the image, you can see pedestrians walking across a walkway that bridges Station Park Green to the train platform. The image on the screen shows the project's site plan. The building includes, including the garage, would front Concord Drive, and the surface parking lot would be located towards the rear of the site. A 16-foot-wide publicly accessible walkway would run east-west across the middle of the site, forming a connection between the Station Park Green Development and the Caltrain Station platform. An eight-foot-wide publicly accessible multi-use trail for pedestrians and bicycles would also run north-south and would be located parallel to the train tracks and extends along the frontage of Concord Drive. There would be 16,891 square feet of open space, including a 1,480 square foot dog run. 221 bicycle parking spaces are proposed for residents. 205 would be long-term bicycle parking spaces in a secure bike room, and 16 would be short-term bicycle parking racks throughout the site. In addition, one public bike storage room consisting of 29 spaces would be available for the general public, which would be accessible from the publicly accessible walkway. There are currently 50 existing trees on the site. The proposed project includes the removal of 37 existing trees, of which 12 are considered protected, and will plant 102 new trees. The applicant also tentatively proposes arts such as through a mural or similar along the blank walls of the west facade, which is subject to approval from the Civic Arts Committee. This project was previously heard by the Plan Commission at a study session on September 10, 2019. The previous plans had showed two separate five-story buildings, and the project now proposes just one five-story building. The previous plans included a two-story parking garage that was proposed inside one building, which had resulted in concerns regarding site circulation. The project has now reconfigured its parking plan so that the two-story garage is eliminated and parking is distributed across the site. In addition, the original plans proposed 189 dwelling units through a mixture of studios, one-bedrooms, two-bedrooms, and three three-bedroom units. While the number of units have increased by two units, the three-bedroom units have now been eliminated. Based on the project redesign, many of the commissioners' additional comments, including building design, appear to be addressed. However, one key recommendation that may still be unresolved is providing adequate communal parking for Caltrain users, which staff will discuss in more details later. As mentioned, the project proposes the development of residential units. There would be 141 base units. The project proposes to dedicate 16 of those units to be affordable to households at the very low-income level, which is 50% of the area median income, in order to meet the city's inclusionary housing requirements. This ratio is 11% of the base units. The project therefore qualifies for the state density bonus, which allows a 35% density bonus or bonus units that the project can include. Based on the ratio of units provided, the project is entitled to 50 density bonus units, creating a total of 191 units, which the applicant proposes. The 16 very low-income units would consist of one studio, 10 one-bedroom units, and five two-bedroom units. The applicant also requests 12 moderate-income units, which are between 80 to 120% of area median income. Staff has concerns about this request and will discuss in more details later. The applicant does not request any concessions or waivers. In addition, because the site is located in close proximity to a major public transit stop, the project qualifies for the state reduced parking standard of 0.5 spaces per unit. 96 residential parking spaces are required at a minimum, and the applicant proposes 192 parking spaces, therefore exceeding the minimum parking requirement by about twice the amount. This project is subject to the Housing Accountability Act because it proposes over two-thirds residential use. The HAA limits the city's ability to deny or reduce the project density when objective development standards are met. To analyze the traffic impacts of this project, the city's transportation consultants prepared a transportation impact analysis. The project's TIA analyzed the project's transportation impacts in accordance with the standards of the California Environmental Quality Act and the city's general plan. The project, project is expected to generate 62 new morning peak hour trips and 55 new evening peak hour trips and 907 new daily vehicle trips. Signal timing optimization is expected to be incorporated at three intersections to address the increase in trips. The intersections are 92 and Concord Drive, Delaware Street and 19th Avenue, and Delaware Street and Concord Drive. With these optimizations, the level of service would not exceed the city's standards. To help further reduce overall single occupancy vehicle trips, this project will implement a transportation demand management plan. Because this project is located within the rail corridor transit-oriented development area, the project is required to join the Rail Corridor Transportation Management Association, or TMA, and contribute to the, to help achieve an overall reduction in new vehicle trips of at least 25% throughout the corridor. The trip reduction strategies currently include membership with the TMA, which requires annual reporting, unbundled parking, which means that parking spaces are not just automatically given to tenants. Instead, tenants who request an optional parking space would have to pay an additional fee, and onsite TDM coordinator, institutionalization of the TDM program through department lease, program information about transportation options in new resident packets, TDM communications to promote TDM services through websites, bulletin boards, newsletters, and social media posts, and bicycle support and repair facilities. Non-required optional strategies include discounted go-pass and wait-to-go transit passes, bike education and workshops, car share, bike share, and multimodal wayfinding signage. The applicant is not incorporating these into the project at this time, but may potentially do so in the future. On June 6, 2005, the city council had adopted the Rail Corridor Plan and Bay Metal Specific Plan Environmental Impact Report, which included this project site. In accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act, an addendum to the Environmental Impact Report has been prepared for this specific project site. No new impacts have been identified after conditions of approval, project design, and mitigation measures as previously required are incorporated. The project includes a mitigation monitoring and reporting program, which is in place to ensure compliance with the mitigation measures analyzed and required by the original EIR. As noted in the agenda report, there are two discussion items the city staff would like the Plan Commission's input on. The first item relates to communal parking, and the second item relates to moderate-income units. The project does not propose any communal parking for Caltrain users except for two ADA parking spaces. As currently proposed, the remaining 189 would be entirely dedicated to residents. This falls short of the Transit Parking Demand Study, which determined that there is a demand for 51 communal parking spaces, of which 46 should be standard and five should be accessible spaces. Staff has concerns with the shortage of Caltrain parking. For example, there may be inadequate parking capacity for existing and project Caltrain ridership demand at both the project site and nearby downtown and Hillstill Caltrain stations. This might result in parking overflow, which will lead to congestion on nearby public streets. This may also lead to fewer riders from this Caltrain station, which would affect the long-term viability of the Hayward Park Caltrain station. If the station were to close, this would undermine the city's intent to develop this area as a transit-oriented area where many projects have already been built. The applicant has indicated concerns with providing and managing parking for Caltrain users at the site except for the two accessible spaces. Staff has suggested a shared parking program with the residents as one potential, potential solution or option. For example, the project's site could potentially provide 51 shared parking spaces where the spaces would be reserved for Caltrain users Monday through Fridays, 7:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and available to residents at all other times, including nights and weekends. This option could be a temporary program that is reexamined in three years to see if continuing the program is feasible or if adjustments are needed. Staff also wanted to note that the project proposes unbundled parking, where not all tenants are automatically given a parking space. So there may be residents without vehicles who are not interested in having a parking space at all, making the possibility of a shared parking program even more feasible. Staff would like the Commissioner's input on whether the two ADA spaces for Caltrain commuters are adequate, and if not, what modifications are requested. The second discussion item to be discussed relates to moderate-income units. The applicant is requesting to provide 12 moderate-income rental units, which is in addition to the 16 very low-income units. As mentioned earlier, moderate-income Tennessee is restricted to households with gross incomes of between 80 to 120% of area median income. The applicant is requesting the city to manage the moderate-income units. Staff is concerned that the rents would be similar to or exceed market rate and therefore would no longer be affordable or below market rate. Based on previous projects, staff has found it challenging to find eligible and interested renters for moderate-income units. The rents for the moderate-income units are often close to market rate rents, so tenants opt to move into market rate unrestricted unit because they are not subject to the city's restriction, which requires an annual income certification to ensure that the household continues to qualify. As a result, sometimes the units remain longer, vacant longer than it desired, which does not meet the intent of the city's inclusionary housing program. On the screen is a table showing what the maximum incomes are for the 90, 100, and 120% income levels based on the number of people in the household. For example, a household of two earning up to 159,350 per year would fall under the 120% AMI category, which is still within the moderate income level. On the screen is a table showing the maximum rent for studios, one-bedrooms, and two-bedroom units. The rent varies depending on whether the moderate-income units are the 90, 100, or 100% AMI level. For comparison purposes, the column on the right shows the fair market rent. Fair market rent is determined by the Department of Housing and Urban Development and is used to determine the eligibility of rental housing units for the Section 8 Housing Assistant Payments Program and are not necessarily representative of actual market rents. In many instances, the fair market rent is lower than actual market rents. As you can see on the screen, a one-bedroom apartment could cost as much as $3,652 for a renter in the 120% AMI category. Staff has concerns that this may be significantly higher than fair market rent as shown on the right-hand column. Staff has considered some potential options with the applicant. One such option is to accept the applicant's proposal of 12 moderate-income units with monthly rent set at 90% of area median income. This would allow a larger pool of qualified housing candidates while capping the rent to a more affordable level. Another potential option would be to not accept the moderate-income units into the city's housing program. In that case, the responsibility to fill these units would fall on the applicant instead of the city, and modifications to the conditions of approval would not be required. Tonight, city staff is seeking the Plan Commission's input on the moderate-income units and would like to know which option the commission prefers. Staff has completed public noticing for tonight's meeting in accordance with all public noticing requirements, including noticing neighbors within 1,000 feet of the project site and those on the interested parties list. A placard was also placed on the project site. Staff has received approximately 10 public comment letters as of date, most of which spoke in support of housing. All of the public comments have been forwarded to the Plan Commission. After publication of the packet last week, the staff has worked with the applicant to revise some conditions of approval. The revised conditions of approval have been printed and distributed to you. The conditions include modifications to condition of approval number 56 regarding the sewer lateral dimensions. Another modification includes transportation impact analysis condition of approval number 61 to reflect the modifications indicated in the traffic impact analysis, including relating to signal timing optimization. relating to signal timing optimization. The condition of approval number 74, art in public places, has also been modified to specify that should a mural be considered, it shall be located on a large blank wall on the west elevation. Condition of approval number 83 regarding public access has been modified to allow alternatives to easements, but still requires public access on the specified portions of the site. Tonight, staff recommends that the planning commission consider moderate income housing units and communal parking topics and provide direction to applicant and staff accordingly. In addition, adopt an addendum to the previously certified Rail Corridor Plan and Bay Meadows Specific Plan Environmental Impact Report, and approve a resolution to adopt the Site Plan and Architecture Review and Site Development Planning Application based on the findings for approval and subject to the conditions of approval attached to the staff report and as modified by staff. This concludes staff's presentation. Staff is available to answer any questions the commission may have. The applicant is also here to present their project and answer questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Are there any questions to staff from the commissioners, or should we go directly to the applicant presentation?
Vice Chairman, I have a question for the staff. My question has to do with the modifications to the conditions of approval, number 74, art in public places. So, the question I have is, the way this is worded is if public art is proposed, then the artwork shall be included, shall include the blank wall at the left side of the west elevation. So, does this condition of approval give the applicant the opportunity not to do public art in this wording? Or is this, I'm just curious why it has an if/then phrasing?
That is correct. Ultimately, the public art would be determined by the Civic Arts Committee, so it would be at their discretion what the public art item is.
Through the chair, if I could add to that. So, the public art, the city has a public art requirement in its ordinance, and the applicants have the option to either propose it onsite or to pay an in-new fee. So, it would be up to the applicant to determine the path that they would want to go. Therefore, the condition builds in some flexibility. As currently shown on the plans, the applicant is proposing public art along the west facade, and staff wanted to clarify that if that proposal is retained, then that proposal includes some art on the blank wall as well. So, there would be public art required in one form or another, but it gives the applicant flexibility. If it's on the west facade, it should include the blank wall.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. That was my only question.
Through the chair, would it be possible to ask clarifying questions after the applicant presentation?
Oh, definitely.
Okay.
Commissioner Patel, any questions at this point?
Sure, I can go ahead and ask them now. I have a question for staff, which, I read the staff report, and it made it seem like the previous planning commission that reviewed the study session, I think in 2019, asked the applicant to remove the three-bedroom units in an effort to obtain more units. And from what I can tell, it seems like overall the project gained two units but lost 31 two-bedroom units and all three three-bedroom units. It seemed like this was done at the request of the previous planning commission, and I was wondering if staff has any information about why the previous planning commission asked for that and why they felt that trade-off was good?
I don't think that was staff's intent of the summary of the study session. Staff recalls that at the study session, the planning commissioners asked for more units, but didn't specify trade-offs for three-bedroom units.
Okay, thank you. That's very helpful.
I do have one question for staff, and it has to do with the conditions of approval, the modifications. Item number 61, both the AM peak and PM peak, timing optimization at State Route 92 westbound ramps and Concar Drive. So, it has been noted or modified that these delays, the increase in the delay needs to be below four seconds. And what is the level of service at those intersections now? And if it's not reduced to below four seconds, does it become a public safety issue?
Through the chair, based off of the traffic impact analysis, the level of service cumulative with the project would exceed level of service, I believe E. I can double check the-
I'm sorry, level of service what?
E.
D?
E.
Oh, E, okay.
Yes. I can double-check the transportation impact analysis and confirm that. So, with that level of service, with that level of service, they cannot go above the four-second delay, and with the signal timing optimization, that goes back to the standards of level of service, less than four seconds. So, with the signal timing optimization, they'll go back to our standards of level of service. In terms of the public safety issue, again, if they do the signal timing optimization, then they would reach our standards once again, and that should not contribute to a public safety issue.
Okay. So, the way that I have understood this analysis is that level E, and correct me if I'm inaccurate or incorrect, level E is the worst level of service in the city? And if a project increases the delay by four seconds, it needs to be mitigated in the way that it is going to be mitigated in this project, if it in fact proves to be over four seconds, is simply timing optimization?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So, with this project in close proximity to projected projects over the next five to 10 years, are those projects factored into this analysis?
Yes, existing but not yet approved projects would have been included in the analysis.
All approved projects?
Yes, the approved projects that were discussed with the city and the consultant.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. That was my only question. Are we ready for staff or applicant presentation?
I'm ready.
Ken, will you be sharing your screen?
Oh, I thought you were gonna control the presentation. That would be great.
Okay.
If you can do that. And I'll just ask you to flip the slide or-
Okay, so we can share.
Let me just start off. I would have loved to have been with everyone in person. Unfortunately, I had COVID last week, so I felt that everyone would rather I stayed here than came there. So, I apologize for that, but I really didn't have any control over it. So, first, if we can go to the next slide, Wendy? So, this will be our presentation on Hayward Park. David Yang and Dave Hopkins, both from Saris Regis are in the audience tonight. I think they can wave about now to say who they are. And then, we also have a number of members of our team are also there. Our landscape architect team from Zara Partnership are there, they can wave. And then, we also have our architect, our design architect is also available, Alexander Colacronis with DEE Architecture. We've worked with both of those for a very long time, very, very long time. I'd really like to thank staff for their efforts and their help through this process. As you'll see in a little bit, I'll talk about the length of this process, and they've really worked very, very hard to get this community to where it is today. So, I really want to thank them for their efforts, especially Wendy. I mean, they both have really, in Public Works, they've both done a fabulous job. Can we go to the next slide? So, Saris Regis is a real estate development company. We've been developing real estate here in the Bay Area for over 30 years. We've developed 8,500 homes. We call it In The J. We call that Fremont to Daly City. That's where we've done the majority of our homes, primarily apartments and housing. We like to build things. We don't just entitle them. Almost all of our communities have actually been built at the end of the day. We also manage 10,000 apartments in the United States. So, we know what residents want, we know what residents need, we can manage. You can see here on the upper left is 888 on San Mateo Drive. We did that, very proud of it. It's one of the first lead market rate communities on the west coast. On the lower community on the lower right, that's Humboldt Square as you're entering to San Mateo, or Third Street, that was one of the first communities we did it back in the 90s. And the upper right is a community we purchased. We didn't develop that, that's mode, we actually own that. If we go to the next slide, Wendy? Caltrain is our partner. Caltrain's business is to move people up and down the peninsula. We have representatives from Caltrain here, Brian Fitzpatrick and Nadine Fogarty. If you two could wave to show that you're here. They're a partner, they're a great partner. We've been working with them for a very long period of time on this community. We can go to the next slide? So, just to give you a sense from the timeline, we responded to an RFP in 2014. We went to a planning commission, we had a community meeting in 19, Planning Commission Study Session, September of 19. COVID hit, that caused a delay. We actually were a capital partner onboard at that point. And just as an aside, we have started a number of communities since COVID. Large communities in Sunnyvale, large communities in South San Francisco, you know, throughout the peninsula, we found a way to get things done. We are in the planning commission now. We're hoping to start construction next year and then move residents in two years. Next slide? I think you know this, is a huge jobs housing imbalance in the Bay Area. You know, 100,000 jobs to 10,000 units, and that's in the city of San Mateo. Next slide? The Rail Corridor Plan, this is a great program the city put together. What's, I think everyone knows the goals of the Rail Corridor Plan is to provide TOD housing and jobs near transit. What's really interesting and exciting is how successful the city's been at this process. If you look, this is what it looked like before the Rail Corridor Plan was created, and you can see the Bay Meadows Race Track in place down over by the Hillsdale Train Station, and everyone knows what's happened there. But then, when you look up at the Hayward Park Station, you can also see a lot of changes that have happened there. I'll go into that in more detail on the next slide. The one actually thing on the, I do want to mention on the Rail Corridor Plan, they do talk about shared parking, but when they talk about shared parking in the Rail Corridor Plan, they really talk about it in the context of residential and commercial uses. They don't talk about it in the context of commuting uses and residential uses. We really don't feel that is a good, we don't feel they really share that well. And you can see on this slide just what's around us. We have very amenity-rich in addition to transit-rich. The Safeway is located over on El Camino. There, half-mile away, the Trader Joe's is located a little less than a half-mile, and is actually getting closer when Concar Passage gets developed. And you can see a lot of development that's been built, you know, more recently. Next slide? Yeah, so, when Caltrain develops their stations, they have a different typology for each station, and this station is a neighborhood collector. And it's, the primary access is by virtue of Caltrain, what they've determined, is for walking and biking. It's not for parking cars. You know, we actually did a study back in 2019 pre-COVID. We found a maximum of 13 people were parking and taking the train. The majority of cars parked on that station were contractors that stationed Park Green. Caltrain was doing some work down on the Hillsdale Station at the railroad crossing. And then, you know, a lot of other people parking there actually were going to work, and we work across the street, because the parking here was $2, they were charging something like $10, $15. So, you know, our residents, we anticipate that they will take the train, they might have an amenity from their employer, the employer's down in Redwood City or in the city. And, you know, they might also work one or two days at home now, shared with work-from-home program. So, you know, we don't think that shared parking would work, and nor do we think our capital would accept that. We don't think we'd be able to finance this community. Capitals really require a parking of one-to-one. We have never done a community of those 8,500 units with parking of less than one-to-one, and we've done a lot of transit-rich communities. We feel that this will never get built if that's the case, if that, if some type of shared parking becomes a requirement. Can we go to the next slide? The other thing I think is very relevant is everything around us is parked at 1.3. Many of those communities are state density bonus communities. For us to be parked at 0.5 or less than one-to-one would put us at a significant disadvantage to the market. Okay? And, you know, additionally, you know, shed parking is not an objective standard. Next slide, please? We've done a lot of community outreach. We did it before the pandemic, we've done it more recently before this meeting itself. We have endorsements from the Bay Area Council, the City of San Mateo Chamber of Commerce, SANSITA, and as Wendy said, we also made a number of changes to our plan in response to what the planning commission asked for, comments from the planning commission. We go to the next slide, Wendy? Site plan, Wendy did a good job describing the site plan, and she did note these 12 moderate income units, those who are totally voluntary. We're fine managing those, I'll speak to that in a little bit. We also have a very innovative program, which I'll talk about in a few minutes regarding the commuter bike parking. One thing that I think is very relevant is, and you can see it here, we're providing a lot of eyes on the train station on the platform. We think that promotes safety in that area. We also are sheltering a number of our units from the train tracks by creating a corridor along that area, which provides a lot of protection from the noise. As I mentioned, we developed 888 North San Mateo Drive, so we understand what it's like to develop next to train tracks. And, you know, that does have an impact. Everyone that lives in San Mateo understands the freight trains that run up and down the Caltrain line, so this will really shelter both our courtyard and our residents from that noise. Obviously, the balance of our building and our entire building is built up to the current noise standards to protect our residents from the noise. Next slide? So, from a building highlights perspective, starting from the left, we're going to have a rooftop lounge on the top floor, and that lounge, in addition to having an interior space, will also have an exterior space. We've done that in a number of other communities, Redwood Sea, San Jose, South San Francisco, very popular manager of residents, Lotte. This enclosed courtyard we described, it'll have electric grills. This is an all-electric building, it'll have, and I'll talk about some of this in a later slide with the graphic for the courtyard. We'll also have a community room, which will have some volume. One of our communities, when I developed 888, sometimes I go back and, you know, I see people using the communities, and they use it for baby showers or some birthday parties, things of that nature. Just a place to either work from home or just to recreate and relax. Next slide, please? This is one of the things we're really excited about. We're gonna have 28 bike parking spaces within the building itself. That provides an additional level of security. I know people can take their bike on Caltrain, but if they don't have to, they would rather not. We'll have some type of app access- app access for residents or for commuters, not residents, so that they can get in there. So we'll know who's accessing that space to provide a higher level of security for those bikes. We have a hundred and twelve long-term bike parking spaces. And then on the right side, we're going to have, you know, a gym, a basing office, and then a lounge. And great package system, a lot of people get their deliveries. So we, we know what people need and we'll be including that. Next slide, please. Really excited about this elevation down here. Alex can talk about it more if you have any questions. But it's going to be very high-quality materials on the first floor, storefront windows, stone. And then I really like how the language of the building goes vertically down the street and is bracketed by the high points with a different, with a different color. And next slide. This west elevation provides an understanding of that rooftop deck, how that'll look if people are driving by. We think the public are on this elevation. Here is great, and Wendy described how it can move over to this leftmost white wall. It really provides some identity to the Hayward Park Station. People will start to achieve in the Hayward Park area with this mural, which I think is a fabulous thing. Next slide, please. One of the things we're focusing on here is potentially using what we were talking about in the up-left-hand image you'll see on this slide, which we call a positive-negative space, so that we paint a portion of this space. But it looks like the entire mural is on that space. That allows us to capture a larger total square footage area for that space. We have an art consultant that's done this before and very successfully. But we don't want you know, commit to that. We might also do some type of sculpture, like you see on the lower left, some mobile and elements that move, or some type of tie-up, now that you see on the right. Next slide, please. Oh, next slide, Wendy? Oh, I think we, there's the community amenity slide? Yes. So you can see there's a graphic of our courtyard with the festival lighting outside the community room and tables. And then all the areas to recreate high-quality interior finishes, the high-quality meeting room, many rooms, high-quality fitness center. Next slide, please. This is going to be a green building. It will meet all of the city's reach codes. It's transit-oriented, Energy Star appliances, water conservation features. This building will use much less energy than the majority of the residences within San Mateo. It's also parked at one-to-one, which is a very low parking ratio for a building of this size. So, and it also has solar panels. The solar panels will generate enough electricity to cover our building exterior lighting for a year, year for year on average. Next slide, please. The community benefits, this is a very robust community benefit package. We are paying all construction workers a prevailing wage. That is a big, big item. Sixteen very low-income homes, voluntary affordable homes, visible public art, pedestrian connections, over thirteen million dollars in real estate taxes over the next ten years, updated streetscapes on Concar, TOD. And we're also undergrounding the utility lines. Next slide. I'd like to really spend a few seconds and talk about these moderate income homes. Because as you look at these homes, you'll see that the hundred percent, hundred-twenty percent moderate cost of these homes. Well, first of all, there are no studios available at that rate in this area in the Transit Corridor Plan. From Station Park Green down to Bay Meadow. And then on the one-bedroom homes, you look at the price of Azure, and then you compare that to the price of the hundred-twenty percent. That's a very significant discount. And as I said, we are, we can manage. Next slide, please. On the there is a need for moderate income homes. When you look at the LINA allocation of twenty-three to twenty-three to thirty-one, there's eleven hundred moderating, a need for eleven hundred moderate homes. That is higher than the need for low-income homes. Obviously, it's not as low, as high as the need for very low-income homes, but we are providing very low-income homes. And with that, I'd like to thank the Planning Commission for their time and also like to thank staff again for their help through this process. And if there are any questions, we have our entire team available to answer them.
Thank you, Ken, for the presentation. At this time, do we have any clarifying questions from the commission to the applicant?
Through the chair, I held mine for staff as well as for the applicant, so if possible, I would just run through all of them.
Sure.
I will bring this over here. Let's start with, and I've got eight or nine questions for frame of reference here. I've got some for staff or start with the parking. So just to confirm, is it staff's understanding that Caltrain does not see the need to provide additional parking for commuters beyond the two stalls? And is there any? I know it's a, I don't think anyone thinks the existing parking was fully subscribed, but it wasn't empty either. So was there any logic or rationale behind that thinking?
That, that is correct. That is staff's understanding. Staff, Caltrain has indicated to staff that they would like to see housing on the site and that current Caltrain users can, at the station can instead drive to the downtown or Hillstone Inn stations instead. And I believe the Caltrain representatives might also be here tonight to answer those questions as well. Thank you.
And then a couple more on parking to staff. If, if we ended up making a recommendation to approve this with more parking dedicated to Caltrain, so less parking dedicated to the residents, is there any consideration to the, to the density bonus law or the HAA in regard to that, that potential action?
Sorry, can you clarify the question?
Yes, sorry. Is reducing parking on the project by reallocating it to Caltrain users, does that have any relation, does that have any impact legally with relation to the project being considered under the density bonus law or the Housing Accountability Act?
Yes, so this project is a Housing Accountability Act project. So the city cannot require anything that the applicant does not propose if they're already meeting the objective development standards. But the commission can make the request, and if the applicant agrees, then we can make those modifications to the project.
Okay, thank you. One more on parking to make sure I'm thinking about it correctly. In terms of ongoing managing of Caltrain parking, mitigating undesirable side effects from, let's say, a potential lack thereof, is that the sort of thing that could, that would be within the purview of TDM monitoring or another TDM program? And I ask because I might be, I know that really the spirit of the TDM program is to manage the parking of the residential building. And so I wanted to see if I was thinking about that incorrectly.
Is it possible to defer this question to Public Works?
Hi, through the chair, Sue Ellen Atkinson with the city's Public Works Department. And the TDM monitoring that happened, that goes on annually for all of the rail corridor projects is focused on the projects themselves. And parking impacts as it would be related to Caltrain commuters would be separate from the project. So the counts that are done annually would be focused on the trip generation for the project itself. For Caltrain users, that's essentially a separate audience, so that would not be captured under that annual monitoring.
Okay, very helpful. Sue Ellen, can I ask you one more?
Sure.
They count at the curb, right?
Typically at the driveway unless there are extenuating circumstances where we need to be counting at a ingress and an egress and then determining pass-through trips or trips that are for another purpose.
Okay, just thinking that you would, you'd all, everyone would come in the same curb. You would, you wouldn't know if someone was going to use the Caltrain parking spots unless you were like right there, right?
Were that to be the case, we would be able to do monitoring of the users that have Caltrain parking permits displayed for that certain time and then reduce that from the trip counts.
Okay, thank you. Those are all my parking questions for staff. A couple housing questions. One thing I was, I was looking at and I emailed about it, so I'm probably just going to say it for clarity or get the answer for clarity on the record, but the, the table of rents that, that staff put in the report, thank you very much for that, by the way, that had, you know, what the rents would be for ninety percent AMI, a hundred percent AMI, and a hundred-twenty percent AMI. I checked the math and found that the ninety percent AMI rent is based on ninety percent AMI income. That's the same for a hundred percent. But the one hundred and twenty percent AMI rent is actually based on a one hundred and ten percent AMI income. So I think that's, that's coming from the state code in terms of the way that you do that. But I wanted to make sure that's just, it feels like a weird quirk where we don't actually set what the hundred-twenty percent AMI rent would be based off one hundred and twenty percent AMI income. Did I get that right?
Yes, that sounds like staff's understanding as well. That formula is determined by the HUD.
Okay, thank you. And the applicant's proposed moderate, and actually, this could be for staff or applicant. Those moderate income units that are proposed, are they, maybe this is better for the applicant, actually. Are they proposed to be deed restricted on sort of what is your plan long-term for restricting the rents? Because my understanding is there, you desire the city to manage them, but I don't think in the condition of approval, the city is proposing them to be deed restricted. So whoever wants to take that one?
So I, I can take that. Well, first of all, I'll just say that the rents that we were planning to charge are a hundred percent, twenty percent of the median income, not a hundred of the one hundred and ten. But as in the context of the deed restriction, typically on apartments, the the moderate incomes can move around sometimes. So you, since they're not deed restriction, the total number of units and the and the mix is, it can be, can, can be deed restriction. And it's typically done through a BMR agreement with the city. But if the city doesn't want to be involved in that, we can do it through another mechanism. Okay, because it appeared to me that the city did not want to be involved in that. Then we will, we'll manage it through another mechanism, but we will commit to do it.
Okay, and I, I think I heard all that right. You would still commit to keeping those rents capped in, let's say, perpetuity? Am I understanding that right?
I mean, as long as the building is, you know, operating. I, I think actually, I think the BMRs go for forty years or eighty years. There's a period, there's a standard period. I just don't recall the patterns.
Okay, thank you. And this is probably to staff similar. If we asked for a change to the AMI level of these units or the way they were managed or anything else, does that have any legal considerations with regard to the density bonus law or the Housing Accountability Act, or is it unrelated?
If you would like the city to be involved with managing the moderate income units, it depends on if you're proposing the moderate units to be as presented by the applicant or if you would want changes to the proposal. And if there are changes to the proposal, we would need the applicant's support.
Okay, thank you. Last questions. This maybe is back to the applicant. Thank you for proposing the, the publicly accessible bike room. I think you may have touched on this. I wasn't sure if I heard correctly. Just concerned about the access to that room. So if that room were to be unlocked, so it's easy for someone to show up to Caltrain and just lock, put their bike in there, it also would take away like eyes on the street in terms of, you know, no one can see that you're in there hacking away at bike locks because it's an enclosed room versus if it's out, outdoors on a bike rack. So is there a plan to make some sort of key card access that, I don't know, someone with a Caltrain Clipper Card could use? Or was there a plan for security cameras inside the room with monitoring? It's kind of getting at the safety and security of someone's bike, I guess.
Yeah, so we were planning to find an app that you would load onto your phone. And then you would pre-download it before you got there or when you got there, and then you would enter the room and have it. So there'd be a record of everyone entering via their phone. And we would have a security camera inside. I, I don't, we don't normally monitor those cameras twenty-four-seven, but everything's put on a tape somewhere.
Okay, thank you. And very last clarifying question back to staff with the new, the changes to Condition eighty-three on public access. Yeah, it does look like you've, you've given the option for that public access to not necessarily be an easement. Was, what was the, the thinking behind making that change? And whatever you have in mind, I assume it would be, oh yeah, you say for the life of the project. So yeah, just curious on the reasoning for the change there.
Through the chair, this is Karen McGlyoness, Assistant Engineer in Public Works. So we wanted to add flexibility in the condition to provide a mechanism that still allows public access, whether it's an easement or another document that's approved by the city attorney's office. And the reasoning for that is since Saris Regis has a lease with, with Caltrain, we wanted to make sure that the mechanism is dealt with the lifetime of the project rather than in perpetuity because there could be another lease in the future.
Okay, thank you very much. Those are all my clarifying questions.
Through the chair, if I could address one of the questions, that was related to how long the deed restriction or any kind of BMR units would run for. And we do have clarity that they run for the life of the project because this would be a rental project, not for ownership. So the very low-income units would be for the life of the project.
Thank you very much. That makes sense.
Seema, do you have some questions at this time?
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Wiggins asked one of them, but I have two more that I will pose to the applicant. So similar question that I asked staff, but since it sounds like that decision to rebalance the units wasn't in response to Planning Commission, I'm curious what motivated the decision to make the trade-offs between reducing thirty-one two-bedroom units and three three-bedroom units in favor of more one-bedrooms and a couple more studio apartments?
You, the, this has been going on for a long time. Let me say that. I don't have all that clarity. But I do remember from the study session, there was a lot of concern about that building in the back, and that building was very problematic. This is a very difficult site to develop. It's a very long, narrow site. There was no opportunity to get parking or a double-loaded row of parking in that area, structured garage. So we, and to get multiple levels. So in order for us to maintain the unit count, we needed to put all of those units in the front building. And we, we could not fit any, anymore.
What was increasing one-story not an option?
It was not an option when we were going through the process in two thousand nineteen. I know the city has somewhat changed their perspective on that, but, you know, when we were going through this process, it was not, the other challenge we have is because we only have one exit, I don't think we can go more than two hundred or something like two hundred and five units with one exit. Alex might be able to answer that as the architect, but I believe that's a fire issue.
Sure, I, I wasn't necessarily talking about an increased unit count, but just an increased bedroom count on those units that you have.
Yeah, it would also put us into a different construction type. Which would have, which would have an impact because then we would become a type-three building. So it would just be very, and it was not something the city, until very recently, the city would not consider going above fifty-five feet.
Okay. Thank you. My next question is, if I'm recalling correctly- Okay. Thank you. My next question is, if I'm recalling correctly from reading the staff report, it seemed like you, as the applicant, are not interested in maintaining a shared parking program on the surface lot between residents and Caltrain. I know staff had proposed, you know, could 50 spots be set aside for Caltrain commuters between, I think they said, 7:00 AM and 6:00 PM? And I was just curious why that is not an option that you're interested in in pursuing?
We don't think it works. We don't think commuters and residential homes work sharing those spaces. Some some uses do work, you know, commercial and residential, that works. But, you know, our residents, at some point, they're probably, they may be working from home one day, even though they don't, and they might not take the drive to work, and they might take the train to work, but they might still have a car. So if they have, if they do not have a parking space, they will choose to not lease in our community. And it will impact the marketability of our homes dramatically. It will also create a lot of conflicts. If someone is late picking their car up, and then they get their car towed, it will be a problem. If a resident oversleeps, and they don't move their car in time, and that car gets towed because it's not available for a Caltrain user, that will be a problem. If a resident, one of our residents will probably have a shorter commute to their place of employment than someone driving to the Caltrain station and taking that train to work. And they're really, we really studied the mode use of the parking lot back in 2019, pre-COVID. And, you know, we, we had fear and peers do a very exhaustive study, and there were never more than 13 cars riding the train. If you, whenever, and I've been to this site a lot, there are more cars parked on the southeast corner of the parking lot. The majority of cars are parked, that are in the lot, are parked not near the Caltrain station. And, you know, I believe that the reason for that is people are parking closer to their final destination. If I was taking the train, parking in the Caltrain station, I would park immediately adjacent to the Caltrain platform. And that's not what I've seen in the multiple times I've been there. I mean, we have a lot of challenges with the analysis that Kittleson did. I didn't really feel it was appropriate to get into that level of detail. I really didn't have a time, 15 minutes. But we think there are lots of challenges in that report.
Thank you. That's very helpful. So would would you, as the applicant, be open to reevaluating that question, you know, in one or two years' time? If it turns out a year after the the building opens, if the parking lot is unsubscribed, would you be willing to then maybe consider implementing a shared parking program for Caltrain riders?
It would be a real problem. It would be a real problem. You know, it's, it's, it's not allowed, you know, under the, it's not, it's not an objective standard. And we've, so.
Well, I realize it's not an objective standard, but if if your parking lot is unsubscribed, I guess I don't understand why, like, why you would want parking spots sitting empty.
It would need to be at our complete and total discretion. But we will always talk to the city about, if the city determines that the parking lot is is empty, and they say that, then obviously, we would talk to the city. But it's not something that, it's, based on our experience, we don't, we don't think that is going to happen. You know, especially during the hours that we're talking about. Okay, during the middle of the day, you know, we might have a lot of empty spots. I don't think we'll have those empty spots, you know, at 8 o'clock. We manage a number of units, and we don't see that in the communities that we manage.
Okay.
And we're also asking people to pay for those spaces. And, you know, if they're paying for it, they're, they're not gonna, if they're not going to the office, they're not gonna want to, they're not gonna have another place to park their car.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions to staff or the applicant at this time?
All of my questions have been asked, so thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you. I do have a couple of quick questions and one statement. So I think it's been very clear by Caltrain throughout the recent past and developments in the city of San Mateo, that they, and I know Caltrain is here, and I don't want to interpret things that are inaccurate. And if I do say something that's inaccurate, please, please feel free to address it. When the Bay Meadows project was wrapping up in the commercial side, Caltrain had an opportunity to build a substantial parking structure, and they chose to not build that structure. And I think at the, the part of the discussion around that development was that Caltrain is in the, in the business of providing transportation, not providing parking. And part of the staff report has said that if there isn't, that if applicants or train riders want to, want to use, drive to stations, they could go to San Mateo Caltrain, or they could go to Hillstill Train Station, and they would be, but, and they could use those, but they're impacted. So my one question is, and I don't know if it has any overarching effect on this project, is that if the Hayward Park Train Station is not operating, does this still make this development a transit orientated development? That's my question. And my last thought on the component of providing parking at this station, I believe the applicant, or the applicant told me that, that without a one-to-one parking, parking ratio, that their financing would be in great danger of disappearing. Thus, it would be a direct conflict with HAA. And did I understand that that is, is what you had explained to me yesterday, Mr. Bush?
Yes. If we have a parking ratio of less than one-to-one, we will have, our financing will be very challenged. Our financing expect, we do have one financial partner. We are going to get additional financing, and without a ratio of one-to-one, we don't think we'll be able to do that.
Okay, thank you. So those are my, that was my one question and my one, my one to the applicant. But I don't know if, if this, is this still deemed a transit orientated, orientated development without the Hayward Park Station operating? Does anyone have?
That's a good question, Commissioner Ebner. I think that's something that, you know, I don't know if Public Works can weigh in on, but because they are within a half mile of transit, the, this particular project and others in the vicinity have availed themselves of lowered parking ratios because of that proximity to the station.
Okay. That's why I was looking at the map. You know, the half, half-mile radius from the station does not include the Hillstill Train Station, nor does it include the San Mateo Caltrain Station. I was just curious if, it's a quarter mile, obviously, to the Hayward Park Train Station, but it's not a half mile, it's not in the half-mile radius to either the one in the north or the south. So I don't know if that changes how this project is looked at. That's all.
Through the chair, we would have to do revised mapping for our rail corridor area, obviously, but based on mapping that we've done for another project, this would not be within a half mile of either of the then remaining Caltrain stations.
Thus, it will not be TOD? Yes, yes, Ken.
I was going to say, I don't know what the, specifically, what the bus service is on El Camino, but I know that El Camino does have significant bus service. And this community is close to that. So I think that would need to be evaluated and included in the analysis. But, you know, one of the big draws to this community is, in fact, the Hayward Park Train Station. And I would, I'm not sure why people are saying that the Hayward Park Station is going to disappear. I mean, I mean, Caltrain can speak to the viability of that station. I know they're here in the audience, they should, they might be a person to speak to in that context.
Great. Thank you. Should we now move on to public comments? No, we're good. Thanks.
Vice Chair, are we moving on to public comments right now?
Pardon me?
Are we moving on to public comments right now?
Yes, please.
Vice Chair, we currently have two public commentators in person and three via Zoom, but I'm going to give it a minute.
Great. Can we set the timer for three minutes each?
Yes, Vice Chair, we currently have six public commentators, but we are going to start with the public commentators in person. Tina Robinson, you can come up to the microphone.
Hi. So this is my first time speaking, so I don't know protocol. But as I've been listening to the presentation from the applicant, as well as staff comments, I've taken down a few notes and have several questions, as well as comments. And I'm not sure which order I should go in. So first, I had a question for the applicant in reference to the view. So I live in Station Park Green, and the proposed complex will be directly in front of my living room. And so my concern is, what are they doing about, or how do they plan to address the lack of visibility, sunlight, mountain views, my beautiful sunset, all of those wonderful things? How do they plan on addressing that, as well as privacy, more importantly, with the design of the building that, the part that faces Station Park Green?
Is that all of your, that's your question?
That's the first question, because I have a.
So staff will answer the question after you, you're completed.
Okay. So that's my, that's one question I have about that. The other thing is, because I do live, my balcony faces the Hayward Park Train Station. So to your, a comment to what you asked about the viability of this project of Hayward Park Station is not there, I see the commuters come and go daily, because I face the platform, actually. And seeing that the ridership was supposed to actually increase, from my understanding, with the building of Station Park, and that has not seemed to happen. I, I worry about what that's going to look like in the future, once the project that's on Concur Delaware and Grant, that large project that's going to be proposed, if it actually will result in people taking the train, because Station Park has not increased that. And to the applicant's point, he is correct, the most people do park closest to the platform. And so I see there aren't that, there aren't that many riders. I also see people walking. My other question quickly is, the, the parking that's going to be on the street, if there's going to be any retail parking or retail, where's that parking going to go? My concern is also with the access to that building, because it is one way, there is no way out either way. It's one way in and one way out. How is that going to increase the traffic and the amount of cars? The light that crosses from Station Park to go onto 92, how is that going to be impacted with all of those cars going when I'm trying to get out to go to work? The lack of people possibly also taking the train due to now, tech companies are reducing jobs, and people that have jobs are still working from home, so there's no need to catch the train. And then as far as people parking at the train station to catch it to go to sporting events in San Francisco, that's the only time the parking is full. So where do all those people start to go? So I have many more, but I see I'm out of time. So hopefully, somebody else will ask some of the questions that I'm concerned about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Chair, our next public speaker is Michael Chang. Michael, can come up to the microphone?
Hi, I'm Michael Chang. I moved to the Station Park Circle in March of 2022. I'm really excited about this project. I hope that the commission will consider approving it. One of the things I started doing recently is I have been taking the Caltrain at the Hayward Park Caltrain Station. But the train only runs once an hour. So I also use an e-scooter that Work provides me, and I use that to ride to either the Hayward or San Mateo Caltrains when I miss the hourly train, because those stations have more frequent access. I was really encouraged to see the 29 EV spaces in the garage and the one EV space in the lot. I noted the applicant's remarks that the building is all electric, and I hope they'll consider trying to increase the amount of EV spaces in the lot, as that will still be a source of carbon emissions through the life of the building. With regards to the 12 moderate income housing units, I would actually encourage the commission to consider allowing the applicant to have all 12 of those units as market rate units, as I believe that more market rate units would be better for the affordability of housing in that region. I also really liked the changes to the plan to preserve the access to the Caltrain Station from Station Park Green, as well as the bike trail adjacent to the train, and the access to 16th Street, 16th Ave and South Railroad Avenue Bike Trail. I was curious whether the construction will impact the access for people who are trying to cross to the Safeway on 17th Avenue from Station Park Green during the construction, as well as to the, that north bike trail, again, as I like to ride to the San Mateo Caltrain. With regards to public bike parking onsite, I hope that the applicant will consider providing e-scooter or an e-bike charging facilities in that facility if possible. And I think that's basically it. Really excited about the project, and I hope that the commission will consider my feedback and approve the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Chair, our next public speaker is Sonia Medwin. Sonia, can come up to the microphone?
So we, we live in Hayward Park, and we walk often to, we walk often over there. And so I did a count today, and there was 43 cars parked in the parking lot. So I'm wondering, if a building is there, where do those 43 cars park instead? I'm wondering if, if there's going to be any onsite parking at the new housing complex that's dedicated to visitors, because I think it's really healthy to have friends and family members be able to come and visit, even just pop up to meet up, you know, and not have to park two or three blocks away. And so if they can have some parking onsite that is, you know, two-hour parking, four-hour parking, maybe a few overnight spots, so when, like, the elderly parents come to visit for Thanksgiving, there's a place they can park without having to figure out some neighborhood they can abandon their car in, you know, and hopefully not bother people. Expecting their guests to park on the neighboring streets isn't really practical. I looked around, all nine spaces on Concar were full at 11 today. There's usually 10 cars parked under 92, 11 cars parked down on 19th Avenue towards the Arco. So you have to, you walk like a couple of blocks to get to the parking spaces that are available. available currently, because some of those people are maybe using the spots to take the Caltrain and not pay for parking, maybe they're using them to go to WeWork and not pay for parking, but they're not going to be available for the residents, friends, and visitors unless you change something, like making there be like four-hour parking, two-hour parking. And in Station Park Green, it seems like their parking gets quite full. I did a count there, and there was like four cars parked in the loading zone, and so there was effectively like three empty spots in Station Park Green. So the residents here can't count on their friends being able to go and park in Station Park Green, you know, because there's not really extra spots on the street there. So I'd just like to find out, you know, how are you going to make it so when people say, hey, come over to my house, you know, I can cook you dinner, or like meet up and then we'll take the train together up to the Giants game, you know, where are their friends going to park? And I think there should be some planning, so that they're not frustrated whenever they come over to visit the people who move into this complex. We want quality of life for the people who are living there, and we don't want to build in frustration. That's, I think, and if we change our mind later and decide that we wish that we had a parking space at the Hayward Park Station, we can't create a new one. There's a lot of other interesting parcels that are being redeveloped throughout the city, repurposed, and it's like, oh, look, you know, a new five-story building, and it's more efficient, and it's more happy in there. But this is kind of like, once this parking goes away, there's not going to be another station right there at the train station, a parking lot, so.
Thank you.
Vice Chairman, our next public commenter is Brian Fitzpatrick. Brian, you can come up to the microphone.
Good evening, members of the commission, public, staff. My name is Brian Fitzpatrick, I'm the Director of Real Estate and Property Development for Caltrain, and I'd like to talk to you a little bit about this parking issue, because I think there's some serious misconceptions happening out here. And I think first and foremost, it's important to note that when Caltrain does development, we're not your normal developer. We're developing because our job is to get people out of their cars, into transit, reduce greenhouse gases, pull people off the highway, make a better standard of living for everybody in the peninsula, right? So when we look at developing, we're looking at developing as a mode of access. We're looking at development as parking, but with this parking, we're bringing people to the doorstep of Caltrain, and they walk to Caltrain. They don't drive their car to the station, they don't spend vehicle miles on our roads, they're walking to the station. You'll also note in our development, that we have worked with Saris, who's been a wonderful partner, as has been city staff, to develop connections and bike paths in and through our station. We get people to ride the bikes to the station. Ken talked about the bike room that they're providing, that's another way of getting people to the station. We don't have to get in our car to go there, but we take this very seriously. And when you say parking, we say access. We look at every mode of access, including the ones that we've talked about, and we make sure we balance them correctly. And at this station, we do not want, nor do we need, parking. And as the agency responsible for getting people on the train and managing our parking, we know what is needed. And Ken mentioned our station typologies. We have station typologies, and a local station, we prioritize walking, biking, other modes. We don't prioritize parking, but we do make sure we have enough access to get people on our station. It's important to note, Ken said 13 people came up in his study, our historical studies show seven to 14 people using that station, so it's consistent with what Ken did. The other thing I'd like to note is typically when we do parking studies, we don't do parking studies, we do access studies. We do them in conjunction with our partners in cities and other places. The study that everybody's referring to that says Caltrain needs 50 spots was done without, you guessed it, Caltrain. So when we talk about an objective standard, we're talking about the city, who is our partner, making a decision about parking that the entity that's responsible about parking doesn't think is needed and doesn't agree with the parking methodology. But we do agree that we're going to get more people on Caltrain, increase the viability of the Hayward Park Station, and reduce vehicle miles traveled by doing this development. And we're creating 191 units in an area that desperately needs housing. So I encourage you to rethink your thoughts about parking, think instead about access, and think about getting people out of their cars onto Caltrain. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Chairman, our next public commenter is Max Motner. Max, you can come to the microphone.
Hello, commission, hello, staff. I'm a resident of San Mateo. I feel positively about adding new housing stock to the city. I'm glad that higher density housing developers are coming to the table here in San Mateo, developing a surface parking lot into housing, which our community would benefit from, especially our community's renters, who benefit from higher supply. On the costliness of these units, we've got some highly compensated employers, highly compensating employers within really close walking distance of this proposed development, like Snowflake and the Bay Meadows offices, so I can understand why this is a desirable location, both for the developers and the community to have more housing. This also chips away at our imbalance jobs-housing ratio, which has been spoken to, and helps us meet our state RENA goals in a concerted way, so that we don't lose our future sovereignty over zoning decisions. One of the topics that is personal to me is non-car transit, and I sold our household's second car, much to the chagrin of my wife, but I am the biker of our family, and I've found a lot of access issues solved with transit with the BikeLink option that a lot of the transit agencies in the Bay Area use, including Caltrain, including BART. That might be one solution that a developer, in concert with Caltrain, could utilize to safely allow folks who aren't driving to the station to park their bikes for long durations. They come out to something like three to five cents per hour, and I've utilized it a lot in the last month. So that's, in summation, my thoughts about it, I'm really grateful that we're talking about developing a surface parking lot into housing, which our community needs, and I'll leave it there.
Thank you.
Vice Chairman, our last in-person public commenter is Nadine Fogarty. Nadine, you can come up to the microphone. Vice Chairman, our next public commenter is via Zoom, Stephanie Reyes, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Good evening, planning commissioners. In the Bay of Development, which is just down the street, just down Delaware from this proposed project, I want to urge you tonight to approve the project. It's been very exciting to see this area start to evolve into what our community has been envisioning for the rail corridor plan for so long. Station Park Green is a great vision, there's the Heinz Office Development, I'm really looking forward to the new project on that huge parking lot over by Rite Aid, and this project before you tonight will be just another great piece of the puzzle in fulfilling our vision of a walkable mixed-income neighborhood near this Caltrain station. I know the commission is well-versed in the truly awful housing crisis that we have in our E and in our region, and just the huge negative impacts that housing crisis has on families, on the environment, on our community. And the only way to get out of the housing crisis is by building more housing. San Mateo, as a city, is rightfully seen as a progressive, forward-thinking leader among peninsula cities when it comes to approving high-quality mixed-income projects in sustainable locations, and I urge you to maintain that reputation for this project tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Chairman, our next speaker via Zoom is Louis Morante. Louis, you can go ahead and unmute yourself. It looks like Louis is not, oh, there, I guess, okay. Louis, you can go ahead and unmute now.
Hi, yeah, thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name's Louis Morante, I'm the Vice President of Public Policy at the Bay Area Council, which represents 300 of the area's largest employers. We're here tonight to express our support for the project as it's currently proposed. I think Caltrain did a really wonderful job speaking to the lack of need for additional ride, or community-focused parking at the station. So I'll just focus my comments on some of the fair market rent and the portion of the project, that's the moderate income piece. First, a little background about FMRs. They're set at the 40th percentile of gross rents for regular and standard quality units in, you know, small areas. So they're typically homes that are, by definition, low-end homes, tend to be much older and lower quality. I think in terms of determining what the need is for moderate income housing, the city is much better positioned to look at similar projects. So I just sort of randomly pulled one, the Azara Project that San Mateo approved in 2021, which has similar unit types to this one, rents at, starts rent at $4,100, and two bedrooms start at $5,000. The long-term savings of a deed restriction could be even greater than just looking at this difference in FMRs. Because FMRs often lag with market rents due to inflation, or just the fact that FMRs are set using data usually from three years ago, the immediate and long-term savings of including these moderate income homes in the suite of the project could be really immense for the people who are able to access them. I'll also point out that over the last eight-year period, the fifth cycle of the regional housing needs allocation process, San Mateo only built 17% of the moderate income housing that the state of California thought it needed. That definitely demonstrates that we should be doing everything we can as a community to approve moderate income housing, especially when it's coming at no additional cost. The moderate income units also make the project more appealing to the community, meaning that removing them could be seen as reneging to the community, and otherwise make the project less popular. I strongly urge you to support the project as it's currently proposed, and to include the moderate income units that are absolutely needed in the community by working people who are going to be using that transit and living in our area and working, you know, potentially in other ones. Thanks again for your consideration of my comments.
Thank you.
Vice Chairman, our next speaker via Zoom is Richard Hedges. Richard, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Thank you very much, planning commission. I appreciate the ability to speak tonight. Been very pleased with the amount of comment tonight. I think people understand how bad this housing is needed. I can't think of a better place for housing than right next to a train station, unless it's taking the air rights and building above it, like they have in other parts of the world. I'm very supportive of it, I think it's the right size for the space. I'm glad to see there will still be a walkthrough from Station Park Green to the Caltrain station. I do have some concerns about the number of disabled parking spaces. There should be somewhere between three and five. I think it just makes sense. Also avoid somebody possibly filing an ADA lawsuit, to have enough to make sure that everybody that needs a disabled space has one. And my view of the parking that's been used there is probably in line with other speakers, somewhere between five and 15 spaces in any particular day. So I don't really see a problem, maybe Mr. Bush or others can explain it to me, with having at least 10 shared parking spaces, so the public can park there if they need to. There are other alternatives for parking, there are some spaces available on the west side of the tracks, not a large amount, but there are some. As far as other transit, there's a 292 bus that runs from downtown San Francisco to Bay Meadows, over to Saratoga, and also you have the El Camino Real bus. I cannot see any reason to turn this down. I don't think having a few shared spaces would be a terrible imposition to folks that live there. So I'm hoping that this development will be approved, and tonight is the time to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich.
Vice Chairman, our next speaker via Zoom is Jordan Grimes. Jordan, can you go ahead and unmute yourself?
Yes, good evening, commissioners, staff, thank you so much for your time. Jordan Grimes, I live across the street in 19th Avenue Park. Just wanted to voice my strong support for this project as a longtime nearby neighbor. This is exactly how our city, how and where our city should be building, on empty surface parking lots right next to the train station, could not envision a better site. On the topic of parking at Caltrain, I wanted to mention, is there an echo? Is that just?
No, it's clear here.
Okay, interesting, okay. In the 30 years that I've lived here, including many taking the train daily, lack of parking at the site just isn't an issue. It'll be even less of an issue if the city commits to implementing the bicycle master plan, creating safe, protected routes using alternative modes to get to the station. Given the explosion in usage of e-bikes and e-scooters during the pandemic, I just don't see any kind of parking problem here. I do wish there were more units included, and that the park, that the project was taller. Ken was frankly too polite to say it, but that's largely due to the city frankly ignoring, for following the law, the correct application of state density bonus law. I'm glad that the city has now committed to following the law in that regard. On the topic of parking more generally, a little frustrating that there was so much included, I do get it, though, I wish we'd cut to the chase a little bit earlier and, you know, just gotten to the fact that it's about financing, totally get that, banks and legacy financial institutions aren't quite up on progressive parking standards quite yet, but it would be nice to, you know, just come right out and say that. Overall, though, this is a really incredible project. It'll help with the massive 10-to-1 jobs-housing imbalance the city has built up over the past decade. It'll help people like me, who grew up in the city and would like to stay here, do that. And so I'm looking forward to seeing it built and utilizing the property. So thank you so much, and please move it forward.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes.
Vice Chairman, we don't have any more public commenters.
Thank you, we'll close the public comment period and bring it back to the commission for any clarifying questions prior to looking at the topics that staff would like us to address. Seema, do you have some comments that you would like to make now? Oh, I'm sorry, can we please first address the public's questions to the best of our ability?
On page 827 of the plans, I can see if I can share screen, it does show the shadow studies, and whilst our city's multifamily design guidelines encourages protecting views and avoiding shadows, it's a guideline that we encourage, it's not a, we don't have requirements regarding that.
Are there other questions that you are prepared to comment on from the public, or is that the only one that you are able to address?
I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Pardon me?
I can answer any other questions the commission may have.
I do not have any other questions, I was curious if we had any comments to, that the public had asked.
So through the chair, if I may, I just did want to speak very briefly to the point of the moderate-level BMR units that are proposed. I wanted to point out that on February 3 of 2020, the City Council did have a public hearing on the resolution for our inclusionary housing requirements, and at that time, the topic of moderate units did come up, and at the time, the City Council opted to require 15% moderate if they're for sale, but did away with the inclusion of the moderate rental units in the inclusionary requirements. And as I recall, the reason for that is that we had had at the time vacant units in the moderate level, and we had done a survey of other rents in the city of a variety of housing stock, and found that there were comparable and even less expensive units in older housing stock, and then comparable in some of the newer housing stock. And so we haven't updated that study since that time. So it's about two and a half, almost three years old. But we do have, I know, a studio that's at moderate level right now that's been sitting vacant that we've had some trouble with. So I just wanted to make sure that the commission has all of that information before engaging in the discussion.
Thank you. I do recall in the past that a couple of times it has come up that the staff has not found these units to be effective in the marketplace and alleviating and getting housing into or people into the housing as the city wants to. Yet is there also a concern that, I mean, would it be acceptable to more acceptable to staff if, as the applicant has said, they are willing to manage those units themselves?
I think that if they are willing to manage those units themselves, that that does take the onus off of the city for managing vacant units. And it takes some of the requirements just just away from staff to manage that for something that may actually prove to be difficult to manage and may not may or may not provide the level of affordability and full units that the city is looking for.
Okay, thank you very much. So are we ready to go to the questions? Seema, you look like you have something.
I just have one follow up question for either staff or the applicant. And that is, there was a question from a member of the public about visitor parking spaces. And I was wondering if the applicant could clarify whether or not there are visitor parking spaces and if so, how many?
Yeah, there are 12. Right now, I think we have programmed 12 visitor parking spaces in the community.
Great, thank you.
Just to clarify, that's outside of the security gate.
Regarding privacy, similar to the concern about shadows and sunlight, privacy is a recommended guideline that our design guidelines speak to, but unfortunately, we don't have requirements about that.
Okay. Thank you. So are we prepared to address staff's questions at this point? Can we please get them on the screen?
Through the chair, is it okay to discuss other aspects of the project beyond just what the staff is asking in those questions?
Absolutely. Seema, since you are remote, would you mind starting each time?
Yeah, no problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I will start with topics that are not on these two questions. One, I guess this is sort of a question, sort of a comment for the applicant. A member of the public mentioned this as well, the desire for e-bike or e-scooter charging facilities within the bike storage facility. I'm curious if something if that's something that the applicant would be interested or willing in adding to the bike storage facility, given that the fastest selling electric vehicle right now is a bike and not a car? Oh, I think you're muted.
No problem. I think the applicant gets five minutes after the questions to address them or?
We, however you prefer.
Go ahead, Ken.
Yeah, we would, we would provide, we would provide some type of charging mechanism, whether that's like a charge point system or something of that nature for a car or something for visitors or for the residents.
But in the bicycle facilities?
Yes, that's, that's, that's what I meant. We haven't, it's a new technology.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. So we haven't, I haven't figured it out yet. Okay. But I think it's totally appropriate. They've really taken over in the last, I'm going to say even in the last six months.
Yep. Great. The, so another topic that's not on here, but that was top of mind for me and this, I'm going to sound like a broken record to, to people who've heard me speak about this topic before, is the issue of air quality. The California Air Resources Board has a recommendation from 2005 against citing sensitive uses, sensitive receptors such as homes or daycares. Again, closer than 500 feet of a roadway that averages in excess of 100,000 vehicles per day. And 92 east of El Camino Real does meet that criteria. I measured the location of the site from 92 and it's 150 to 180 feet from 92 at the closest point. And so that's well within 500 feet, which is the recommendation. I think in an ideal, I know this site is tricky. I think in an ideal world, the location of the building and the location of the surface parking lot would have been swapped to put more distance between the units and 92. But I'm, I'm wondering what can be done to keep people out of potentially particulate matter? I noticed on the south elevation, there's a few balconies that face 92. There's a few balconies, I think, on the west elevation as well, possibly the east elevation. You know, is there a possibility of removing the balconies that are within 500 feet of 92 so that we're not subconsciously encouraging people to stand out, you know, in, in the open air within a distance that may be unsafe from the roadway? It was hard for me to measure the location of the public amenities, the outdoor public amenities accurately. So I couldn't tell if, for example, the fifth story rooftop deck is within 500 feet. But, you know, if it is, like, is there anything that can be done with air, outdoor air filters or something to make that space safe for outdoor use? So those are a couple of questions and concerns that I had. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot to unpack there. We could have a long conversation about that. You know, every, every, first of all, there has been an air quality study done for the community as part of the sequel work. Every home has a MRF 13 filter, which provides some protection for the, for the residents themselves for the inside. And, you know, I know, I'm pretty sure you know, so I apologize if I repeat stuff that you already know. You know, lots of times trees can provide some type of screening for, for that, that. But we also have the courtyard protected from that area too, which, which I think, I think it helps. It just intuitively, it makes me think that, that it helps.
Sure, that's why I didn't mention the courtyard.
And, you know, it's also protected from the train, although the train's going to be electrified, which will really reduce that, that impact too. You know, we don't have as many, I'm going to call it the sensitive receptors in the context of young children staying in our communities typically. So that, you know, also helps. And, you know, our residents do like the balconies, but many of them don't spend a whole bunch of time on their balconies either. So, you know, I think all of those things contribute to helping to mitigate that risk in a, in a large way. We can explore some additional elements, but I, I think that the MRF 13 filters on the inside and the ability for people to keep their windows closed and still get fresh air into their homes goes a long way to mitigate that program. Because all these homes are going to have air conditioning, you know, you're not going to need to open your windows, you know, in any context.
Absolutely. I'm not concerned about the interior at all. I'm mostly concerned about people wanting to go outside to get fresh air, which I think is very reasonable and potentially not being able to do that in a way that is safe. But I, I understand your responses. When it comes to the questions, the discussion questions, can I ask staff a clarifying question? How many ADA spaces are required by code?
Need a minute to just look that up.
Okay. In that minute, I'll go on to discussion question number two, which is, I'm, I'm happy to let the applicant offer moderate income units to the community, you know, especially if they're managing it at 100% AMI, given that there's no burden to the city in implementing the program. I, I think, you know, it's worth trying to see if, if those units are fill a need within the community. And then while, while staff is looking up how many ADA spaces are required by code, I, I understand the comments about the parking. I am the biggest fan of public transportation and Caltrain and biking. I try to live that car free lifestyle, but I know that there are people who are not going to ride a bike more than two miles to a Caltrain station, but they might drive a car to a Caltrain station and then hop on Caltrain to commute. And I think it's just as important to get those cars off the highway as the potential cars of the residents who live within an easy walking or biking commute of, of the station. And so I think that's why I'm particularly concerned about loss of parking from folks who are commuting partially by car and the remainder of their trip by Caltrain. Given the staff report noted that the parking facilities at the San Mateo station and the Hillsdale station are already oversubscribed, I'm worried about losing Caltrain ridership from people who can no longer park here and then try to park at other stations instead and find parking at those stations difficult. I realize that parking is not an objective design standard and so I realize that we may not be able to do anything to require a shared parking system, but I will go on the record expressing my concerns about the situation and my opinion that we need to make Caltrain ridership easy for people who are farther than an easy walk or an easy bike ride from Caltrain stations.
Commissioner, would you mind clarifying if your question is for how many ADA spaces are required for the residential use? Or do you mean for the?
For the, for the Caltrain commuters. I mean, it might be that none are required.
I would like to defer that question to the Caltrain representatives, please.
Yeah, I would like to add while the Caltrain representative comes up that the city's code does not have parking requirements for train stations because that's not a use that typically is a land use that the city would review and approve. That's really for Caltrain to determine and also for perhaps parking studies to determine what the appropriate parking requirement would be.
I see. So if there's none that are required, then this again becomes a subjective guideline and not a objective standard, in which case I don't think that we can request more ADA spaces, but I do think that more would probably be nice.
Through the chair, I think it would be important for Caltrain to respond what the ADA requirements are because again, we can't assume that there are none required. I'm sure there are standards for Caltrain parking stations that we may not be aware of.
Thank you.
Could you please repeat that in the microphone? I think the microphone is off. Thank you. Just one second. Yeah, it's not.
I think we need to.
There we go. All right, is that better?
Yep.
It worked great last time. I'm, I'm not a rock star, so I don't exactly know how these microphones work. I think the answer that she said from Pittsburgh was correct, right? There's no parking spots required, so there's no ADA spots required. And I think it's also correct that it's not an objective standard because you've got an entity that has nothing to do with Caltrain parking, trying to tell Caltrain how to do its business. So thank you.
Thank you. Seema? Commissioner?
Those are all of my, those are all of my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And of course, you'll have an opportunity for a closing statement after we've addressed these discussion questions. Who would like to go next?
Through the chair, I'll go. So I'm going to stick as close as I can to the discussion questions in large part because, you know, there's not a lot that should be changing, in my opinion, because this is a pretty completed and thorough project at this point. And I just want to note before I do that, I appreciate these new modifications, the conditions of approval, because one of my comments was going to be for that blank wall to include art as well. So way to be reading my mind, staff. The first one with commuter parking. So I actually went through Caltrain's business plan just to double check things and look, look into that and, you know, future plans for, for stations. And, you know, when I think about as, as having for many years been a Caltrain rider, if I ever do need to take my car to the station for some reason, I'm going to choose a station that has as much, has as many, as many trains that come to the station as possible because unlike walking or biking, automobile travel is probably very unpredictable with in terms of traffic. And so I'm going to pick a place that is going to have more options if I can't make it on time. And so I understand why Caltrain is not including parking at this station. They're going to focus parking at stations that have greater frequency to accommodate that very decision making of riders. And so that way, I just want to kind of give an insight as a Caltrain writer, why, why I understand what Caltrain is doing. Is it, would it be nice? You know, I think it would be nice if, if we could get some agreement for the city to, between the city and the applicant to put, you know, shared parking. But I completely understand how that would be pretty unwieldy to manage. And so I like the idea, but I don't think it would be executable. So that's just what I have to say about commuter parking. And again, the two ADA spaces, I would like them to be more, but for ADA parking spaces, it's a percentage of the required spaces based on certain tiers of number of, of spaces. And there's zero required spaces, so, or zero spaces otherwise. So there's not really a requirement that we can ask other than just ask, hey, could you add another ADA parking space or two? Because I do think that it would be nice, but that's not something that we can hold over their head. And then secondly, moderate income units, I understand where the city is coming from and I understand where the applicant is coming from. And I would like to seek the applicant managing the moderate income units themselves so that it doesn't add to staff time. I think that that to me seems the most reasonable compromise solution. Otherwise, I think this is a good project. It's right there where we want housing. I think that it's, it's near Station Park Green is a great place to live and I think that this would add to that same, that same development as far as, you know, enhancing that, that area with people and, and, you know, movement and life. So much better than the Caltrain station as it currently stands.
Thank you.
Through the chair. One general comment that I can't resist making now, this is a fabulous transformation from a parking lot to homes on transit. And I know we've been getting into the weeds of a lot of various aspects of it, so not to just miss the forests for the trees. This is a huge improvement for the community. And yeah, you know, I just didn't want that to, to get lost. It's, it's a weird, it's kind of a weird site. It's tough to, to, to get it right. And I think it's, to me, this isn't, if there's not a train line here, this is a really, in my mind, undesirable site. You don't see it from anywhere. You don't, you know, you're not really going to know it's, it's there otherwise. And so I feel like it's, you know, it's almost a bet on transit to put housing here. And so I just, I just feel like there's a lot of good decisions being made and a lot of looking to the future of what's going to be sustainable long term. So just had to get that out there. On the parking, yeah, I, you know, I, I read the Kittleson report. I went through the Farr and Pierce numbers. I feel like there's some apples and oranges that were, that were maybe involved in the way that the Kittleson. in the way that the Kittleson report came to its conclusion. So for me, trying to think it through with the data we have, I feel like the the parking demand would be way lower pre-COVID, you know? And then you think about how Caltrain ridership is is not back to where it was pre-COVID. I, you know, I commute to to tech offices and, yeah, I'm not convinced that everyone's coming back to the office five days ever. So I don't know that you're going to get back to that. And then you take into account that the rail corridor plan and our city's policies are to reduce car traffic, get more people on there. I feel like we're talking, practically speaking, about five stalls. It's just not a, it's not a big, a big issue, in my opinion. And I also think the rail corridor plan policies say that we need to work with the Joint Powers Board to to, you know, cover the parking demand. And so they, they don't have a parking demand. That's, I think we, I think it's in, you know, in alignment with the rail corridor plan to work with that. So, yeah, I think these two spaces, while I personally think a few more would be better, I don't see that there's a requirement. And so I don't, you know, I don't think I would request any modifications. On the, how the moderate income units, I appreciate them being offered purely from arena perspective. We're way low on moderate income. And I definitely understand the, that there are practical challenges when the city's managing these that in the future I'd actually like to learn, see if I can learn more about. Because we do still need that that range of housing provided and want to figure out the best ways to do it. So again, if the applicant is willing to manage these, then I think that's some, you know, an improvement in terms of chipping away at affordability for housing. And those are all my comments.
Thank you. For the commuter parking, I think the two ADA spaces are a nice gesture by the developer. They don't have to supply anything. They've chosen to give two. I'll support comments from the other commissioners. If they could squeeze in a few more, it would be nice. But getting two is a nice gesture. I do not see any reason to do any modifications to the parking at this point. I think that the state density bonus allowing us to be at 0.5 parking ratio, yet not being able to get private financing is not an issue that we get to address as commissioners. That is the disappointing equation in this discussion that I am more concerned with. I think this project could perform well at a half a parking spot per unit, specifically because of its great location. Yet because of the financing, financial mechanisms that are available, we don't get to employ that benefit. I think the idea of the applicant taking over the management of the moderate income units is the seamless solution to this issue. I'm glad to see that the applicant is willing to do that management. And it takes the burden off of staff to manage that, manage the situation. I think overall that this is, as many people have said, a great reuse of a surface parking lot. It's pretty exciting when you can come in and take some extremely valuable land and develop it into units for housing. It couldn't be a, there couldn't be a better location in the city being right on to train tracks. I want to thank staff and the applicant for working diligently for many years to put this project together. That's 11 years is quite an effort for 191 units. And sticking with that process is pretty impressive. So thank you. And of course, hearing from the public this evening is always very educational. And the comments are always considered critical in our decision-making. Do we have any other closing comments from any of the commissioners? Starting with Seema Patel, please.
Nope. Thank you.
I just want to double-check to make sure that the management of the moderate income units is an acceptable thing for the for the applicant. I don't know if I read that right. If that was a request. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, this is a great project. Thank you for the entire staff for working on this and for the applicants. I, I think this will just add to that Station Park Green area and the Caltrain station.
Can we please see the recommendation?
I'd make a motion to approve so long as it includes the clarification on the management of the moderate units.
So I'm, excuse me, I'm looking at this recommendation. It says to consider, item number one, consider moderate income units and commuter parking topics and provide direct. That it, that that isn't what we are voting on.
That is correct. Through the chair. That is just to, that you had, the planning commission had the discussion around it and provided appropriate guidance and direction to the moderate income units being managed by the applicant. That does not require any changes to the conditions. It's something that the applicant are proposing and would manage outside the city's program. So we don't need new conditions. And is there any, are there any comments from the commission on the design or the building? The the site design circulation?
I do actually want to just note real quick that I appreciate the fact that it's one building now. And I think about that and just longer term, you know, what's what's the next, you know, 50 years going to be for that site? And that that surface parking lot may someday be just not necessary based on transportation changes. And so having that option for that surface parking lot, I think it's smart to use that space. And so I just want to commend the project team for doing that. It may not seem like, oh, why did they, why'd you do that? But it, and it may not even have been your reason for the design change. But I think that that is a smart move.
Through the chair, I, I had a handful of comments in support of various aspects of the design. They'd kind of been covered by other people. So I would just say the, getting the connection from Station Park Green is really critical. So I appreciate that. And I think the way the street facade, just for anyone that's listening, is designing a building in the future. The way the street facade was done, to me, was nice. It was, it was appropriately scaled it and it articulated it distinctly from from Station Park Green. And personally, I like to see all the oaks in the planting plan. But thank you.
Ms. Patel, any comments?
Nope. You know, we're, the project conforms to all of the objective design guidelines. So I don't really have any feedback on the design.
Fantastic. So are we ready to take a vote?
So just a question. Are we taking a vote both to adopt an addendum and to approve the resolution? Are these two separate votes? One vote? Okay. All right, I'd like to put forward a motion to adopt an addendum to the previously certified rail corridor plan and Bay Meadows specific plan, environmental impact report, and to approve a resolution to approve the site plan and architectural review and site development planning application based on the findings for approval and subject to the conditions of approval attached to the staff report and as modified by staff.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Can we please take the vote?
Yes. Chair Williams is absent. Vice Chair Nutter?
Yes.
Commissioner Nugent?
Yes.
Commissioner Patel?
Yes.
And Commissioner Wiggins?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll close that item and take a 10-minute break. Thank you. Thanks, you guys. Thank you, Seema.
Thank you. Thank you.
SB 9 outlines certain development standards, the city can be more permissive than the state. In that vein, where the state has a maximum height of 16 feet for SB 9 units, the draft ordinance proposes a maximum plate height of 16 feet and peak height of 24 feet for detached units, and a 24-foot maximum plate height and 32-foot maximum peak height for attached units. This would align with the height limits allowed for accessory dwelling units. Parking generation would follow the state's standards, but required or voluntarily provided parking could be either covered or uncovered. Interim objective design standards are also included in the draft ordinance, which I'll touch on in my next slide. Additional local standards for urban lot splits in the draft ordinance include requiring a minimum 10-foot-wide driveway or access corridor for flag lots and/or landlocked properties to allow adequate emergency access, and limiting each parcel to a maximum of two dwelling units, inclusive of ADUs and JADUs. Currently, the city does not have objective design standards for single-family and duplex development. Based on the city's design guidelines, the proposed interim objective design standards provide standards that would be applicable to ministerial SB 9 projects, and contain design standards related to architectural style, scale en massing, and the placement of windows and doors. Regarding architectural style, the proposed objective design standards include a requirement for attached units to be of the same architectural style, and for colors and materials to be consistent across elevations. To control the mass and bulk of a structure, a plain offset of 2 feet for every 30 horizontal feet along the primary street frontage and street side yard, and a second-story step-back of 2 feet within 15 feet of the rear lot line have also been included, in an effort to require some articulation of a structure and to prevent box development, excuse me, and reduce potential impacts to neighbors. Regarding window and door placement, the proposed objective design standards include requirements that each primary unit shall have its own individual entry, and then at least one unit's entry door face the primary street frontage, and that each primary entry have a defining feature, like a porch, stoop, or recess. To preserve neighbor privacy, standards for offsetting second-story windows and glazing of certain second-story windows within 5 feet of a property line have also been included. The proposed objective design standards are based on the department's current design guidelines. These standards are intended to be interim in nature, and will be superseded or amended to align with the final adopted version of the city's duplex and multifamily objective design standards, which the department is currently working on in a separate permit tract and effort when those standards are finally approved. To correct some discrepancies found between the municipal code and the general plan, and to align with current practices within the department, staff is proposing to update the definition of individually eligible buildings contained in Chapter 27.66, Historic Preservation, of the city's municipal code, to align with general plan policy COS 8.1, to include buildings determined to be individually eligible for listing in the National Register of Historic Places, or the California Register of Historical Resources through a Historic Resources Report. In conclusion, staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend to the City Council to adopt an ordinance and associated text amendments to amend Samhail Municipal Code, to add Chapter 2721, Two-Unit Development Overlay District, to implement the provisions of SB 9, amend Chapter 27.66, Historic Preservation, to update the definition of individually eligible buildings, and adopt a resolution to establish interim objective design standards for single-family and duplex development. This concludes my presentation, and I am available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Seema?
Yes, thank you. I have some questions. Hi, I'm awake, I promise.
We believe you.
I have a few questions, I have five questions for staff. My first question is, can you clarify the plain offset objective design standard? What exactly does that mean? Do you maybe have a diagram that could visualize what that requirement is?
Unfortunately, I do not have a diagram, so I will try to describe. The purpose of the plain offset is to create some articulation in a building, such that you just don't have a straight plain wall along the frontage or side yard. So for every 30 feet of wall, we're requiring at least a 2-foot offset to create some articulation of the building. And then for the second story, if located within 15 feet of the rear lot line, we are proposing to have a 2-foot offset, so you would bring the story in 2 feet from the wall below, to create some distance in centering the second story over the first, just so you don't have a straight wall up, potentially, you know, 24 feet to the plate line, you would bring it in a little bit.
Sure, thanks, that's helpful. Is that in line with current objective design guidelines for single-family homes?
So we do have guidelines for single-family homes that contain little to no, or very little objective standards, and those guidelines do talk about centering second stories above first stories, bringing in the mass of a building, and they also do talk to articulation to prevent, you know, blank walls, both vertically and horizontally. So preserving that spirit, those are why those objective standards were added.
Okay, thank you, that's helpful. I apologize, I didn't have a chance to send some of these in advance, so I understand if you might not have all of this information. The staff report mentioned that historic resource evaluations are triggered when more than 50% of a residential unit's exterior walls are demolished. And I was curious, what is triggering that historic resources evaluation? Is that a city ordinance? Is that a state law? Is that some other type of policy?
Yes, so it's part of our historic preservation guidelines, so there's two parts. HRE, Historic Resource Evaluation, is triggered, one, when over 50% demolition is proposed, and two, when that structure is over 45 years old. So to assess the potential historic value of a structure before it's mostly or completely demolished.
Okay, so both of those conditions have to be true for historic resource? Is part of what we're discussing today an opportunity to align R2 development standards against SB 9, or is that a future topic of consideration? Like, could this SB 9 ordinance be written in a way to say that it applies not just to R1, but also R2 lots?
I think we, I think it could, but to keep it focused and to get it through, I think we should contain it to SB 9, because SB 9 has its own CEQA exemption built into state law, where I'm not sure if that also extends to R2 districts, and that might require its own CEQA evaluation if we included that in this project.
And through the chair, oh, sorry, through the chair, Commissioner Patel, if I could add, Manira Sandhir, zoning administrator and planning manager, that this was a topic of discussion at the City Council study sessions, if, you know, what the differences were between R1 and R2, and whether SB 9 could be extended to R2, and the council at this point said, let's go with mostly the minimum state requirements with a few exceptions, and then revisit in a year or so to see how SB 9 projects are coming through the pipeline, and then look at R2 again, potentially. So it was a policy call that was made by City Council, but it also, if the Planning Commission wanted to recommend something to the City Council, it would need further evaluation as well.
Okay, thank you. I'm asking because, as the staff report noted, it seems like we're going to end up in a situation where it is more flexible and easier to build a duplex in an R1 lot than an R2 lot, and that seems a little bit counterintuitive. And so that's why I was asking if we could potentially talk about that today. For the, in reading all of the information about aligning the definitions of historic buildings, I, there was a clause in there that whether a building is determined to be historic is done by a Historic Resources Report, and I was curious, who can generate that Historic Resources Report? Must it be the staff's Historic Resources Consultant? Can anyone submit Historic Resources Report? And if that Historic Resources Report says it meets the definition, then that building is declared historic?
The HRE, or an HRE, was produced by our own consultants, but this question has been raised internally, so I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Manira, that we are trying, we are creating guidelines in which outside Historic Resources Consultants can produce their own documents to just be peer-reviewed by the city. So we're working on that, but right now, we don't have those guiding documents, so at the moment, it would just be through our consultant.
Okay, great, thank you. And then my last question, also related to the Historic Resources portion of the discussion. It looks like staff is recommending that buildings that are determined to be eligible in the definition of historic buildings be considered historic, instead of requiring that eligible buildings actually go through the process of being listed on the National or California Register of Historic Resources. And I was curious, what's motivating the staff's recommendation that a building just has to be eligible to be protected under the city's regulations, as opposed to actually having to be listed?
Complex question. The, listing is the owner's prerogative, right? The city can't require listing of a structure in the National or California Historic Register, but it serves as a way locally, if a property owner decides not to list their property, to still preserve or potentially protect those structures, even if they're not formally listed on those lists.
Okay, just to make sure.
Sorry, if I could add through the chair, another clarifying point. So the intent of the change in the definition is to align the zoning ordinance with our general plan definition of what are historic resources. Currently, our general plan is broader in its definition, and our zoning code is more limiting, so we just wanted to make sure that it was aligned. I know it's coming together with the SB 9 ordinance, but it is a separate code section. It's a cleanup that we're doing, because we did identify this gap between the general plan and the zoning ordinance, and we wanted to address it. But it doesn't materially affect how the city designates a local historic resource.
Sure, okay, so I just, I mean, because the cleanup could go in two directions, right? It could go general plan aligned to zoning, or it could go zoning aligned to general plan. So I just want to make sure I understand exactly the situation. So it sounds like the city cannot require a property owner to go through the process of listing their property on the National California Register of Historic Resources, but we could, as the zoning code does, limit our definition of historic resources to only properties that are listed on those registers. Is that correct?
We could limit that. The proposal is to align with the general plan, which also includes
Right.
properties not identified. Because in 1989, we did a survey of the city, but large portions of the city were not included in that survey, like Samhail Park and other portions. And in addition, some buildings weren't old enough at that time to be surveyed, but that survey is over 30 years old now. So there are portions of the city that were never evaluated, and then there are buildings that were never evaluated because their age then wouldn't qualify them. So we're, there's a gap, essentially. So the goal of the text amendment is to also include those buildings now identified through an HRE as potentially historic, as a historic resource.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I guess, yeah, we can talk about it in the discussion part. Those are all my questions, actually. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Seema. Adam?
Yes, through the chair, I have a few questions. First is, I noticed in the presentation you provided, you listed detached units having a different height standard. Now, am I to understand that means detached units within the rear setback?
No, so it would just be, as written right now, it would be detached units have a lower height, as opposed to units that are attached to the main structure, regardless of if they're within the rear yard setback or not.
But what about two new structures that happen to not be attached? Let's say somebody demolishes their single-family home, and splits the lot, and builds two units on the lot, on each lot, and they're not attached, there's separation, say 4 feet between them. That seems to me to have this ordinance require that now these units can't be two stories. Is that what the intent is?
No, good question. Trying to think of all the permutations is difficult. In that situation, I would say one unit can be designated as the taller unit, so 24-feet plate, and then 32-feet peak, and then the other unit would be the shorter of the two, as currently written. But there is opportunity to suggest a recommendation to only have that height difference in the rear yard setback.
Yeah, that seems to be more consistent with the overall building envelope of the single-family homes that are in existence, is to not have to step down outside of the existing rear setbacks. Okay, thank you for the clarification, I think I may mention that, so, thank you. And then, the other question I had was requirement on individual entries for each unit. Now, does that mean that there cannot be, say, a single door for a duplex on the outside, but then interior, like, entry hallway, that the doors, for two doors for the two units? Is that precluding that? Is that saying that you have to have two doors facing, say, the street, or two doors exiting directly to the outside?
On the surface, yes, so the standard is for each unit to have its own door, kind of like, an ADU needs its own entry, even a JADU needs its own entry, separate from the main house, so aligning with that. And then also, there is flexibility written into the standards, such that if a design standard can't, or does, or an applicant does not want to conform with that standard, they have the ability to go through the discretionary process. So an applicant can say, I would like my design to only have one door. Staff would say, okay, let's go through the discretionary, instead of the ministerial process, to assess that.
Okay. All right, so this, was there, was there some impetus from council to require this requirement for the, for two, for all the doors to exit out directly into the outdoors?
No, the, we did not get into that green, small detailed conversation with council. Staff included that requirement to align with the state requirements for JADUs and ADUs, that require its own individual entry, and then that was my and our reasoning, to require individual entries for each unit.
Okay, I'm just curious, because an individual entry could still exit into a shared corridor space. Okay, and is that, I'm seeing nodding from, okay.
I think you are, I think you are correct. I think the goal is to have separation and not have to walk through one unit
Yeah.
to get to another. And so I think if there's, you know, a foyer or a covered porch for weather protection, I can imagine that that would run afoul of the requirement.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that was okay, because that would be unfortunate to me.
And through the chair, I, we would defer to Laura, there may be some interim design standards that we have built that do speak to, like, separate entries, that are, you know, street-facing, or what have you, so we can look at those, if there's commission concurrence and guidance, that, you know, that provides some flexibility for those kind of situations, where there could be one entry into the building, but then, you know, separate entryways into the two units.
Okay, thank you, thank you. And then, the other question I had was just more, it was a broader, more procedural. So in this, under our ordinances, or maybe just generally with state law, so it's possible for a homeowner to divide their property and build two single-family homes, or one on each lot, and then call it a day? Is that correct?
Yes, that's one permit tract in SB 9.
Okay.
You can subdivide a lot, and then build two primary units on each lot.
Okay. Is it then possible to come back later and build ADUs on those properties?
As currently, as recommended by the Planning Commission, those properties would be limited to two units only. So that would be any unit, ADU, JADU, main house. So if there were two main houses, then they would be excluded from having an ADU or a JADU, as currently written.
Okay, so if this, if these two properties, these two single-family homes on smaller lots, come back and request, you know, an ADU or JADU, or whatever, would those ADUs be governed by our city's ADU laws, then?
If a property that has been subdivided by SB 9, so let's call it an SB 9 lot, you subdivided the lot, and then you built two main houses on that lot, then you would not be eligible to add another unit, whether an ADU or a JADU. So unless the owner converted the main house into a JADU, or, excuse me, an ADU, our ADU regulations would not apply.
And through the chair, if I could add to that, I think once the lot is split, and each lot has one unit, then absolutely, they could have an ADU on that, on each of those lots. I think what Laura is referring to, if you subdivide, and you have two units on each of the lots, so four total, then you cannot add further ADUs.
Yes, yeah.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Yeah, I was asking them about that other scenario, but thank you for clarifying. Okay, yes, that's helpful, thank you. Those are my only questions.
Through the chair. I'm down to one question now, based on previous askings. And just to follow up on the historic stuff, if a applicant comes in for an SB 9 application, and one way or another, it's determined that that property is eligible to be listed, does that, make sure I'm reading this right, that means they would go through the alternative discretionary review process, versus just not being eligible? Is that right? Sorry, I used eligible in two different senses there.
I might defer to Manira.
It may depend on the particulars of that site, Commissioner Wiggins. So at this point, the state has some exceptions for when SB 9 does not apply, so for historic districts, for example, or historic properties. So it would depend on, you know, what the application is for, and if it is designated historic property, then it's possible that it, you know, may not qualify for SB 9. At this point, we are following the minimum state requirements, so that would be the path. However, if the commission or the council recommends that we provide more flexibility, even for historic properties, then that would be something that would be built into the ordinance at council direction.
Okay, that's, yeah, I guess I'm trying to understand, if it's, the state says, as I was reading it, that if it's actually registered, or it's in a district, then they're ineligible. And then we're saying if they are, if they're eligible, like, and you're, basically, you're pointing back to the code, saying, you need to be compliant with the code, and now the code is saying if you're eligible for historic, then you go through this process. That's what, I guess what I'm trying to understand is, maybe you can give me an example of something where, oh yeah, no, it's been found to be eligible by a report that someone wrote, and they're still, they're still able to go through it, because, to me, that's the difference, they're eligible, they haven't actually been listed. So it would seem like, from state guidance, they would still be, sorry, eligible to go through the process.
Mazri, do you want to address that? I'm still grappling with that. I know the state does not just require listed, like, at the state or national register, but also locally designated historic properties, maybe exempt from SB 9, so there are some layers there. If it was to go through an alternative discretionary review process, then CEQA would apply, so that does, you know, allow for more protections to be built in, to assess the impacts to the historic resource. So there could be advantages of allowing for an alternative discretionary review process.
Okay, so I'm understanding that it's a maybe, based on you would, you would trigger additional investigation of that, and make a determination on a case-by-case basis? Okay, thank you.
Right, right, we would consult with our city attorney's office, to see where it falls within the purview of the state law, and then also the local requirements.
Okay, got it, thank you. That was my only question.
Thank you, everybody, and thank you, staff. A great presentation, very clear. So for the SB 9, I had a very simple question. I think I read in there that we could use, or exterior stairwells, or stairs could be used in some of the, in the buildings. And I'm curious if the exterior stairs apply, are they part of the FAR equation? And the only reason I'm asking that, I've seen jurisdictions include exterior stairs as part of the FAR determination, and I know this is kind of nitpicking, but if you're held to a certain 800 square feet, you might not get the 800 square feet.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but as I process, you know, let's pretend it's an ADU, the minimum stairs necessary to get to your unit, I would not count as FAR if it wasn't covered. If it's more than minimum building standards and it's covered, then that might fall into adding FAR to the unit.
Okay. And as it pertains to height limitations on the, on the, on the units, I think it was 16-foot to the plate and 24-feet to the peak of the roof, correct?
For detached units, as currently written.
For detached?
Yes.
Correct. And that is in line with our current ADU?
Yes.
Okay. I still have issues with that height, because I think it makes building more expensive, and I think that actually could be a hindrance to affirmatively furthering fair housing. One of the other concerns that I have with the SB, I think it's SB 9, yeah, I'm not on the historic, no. So there's, the objective building and design standards, all development shall conform to the following B, architectural style, which addresses the exterior components only, of course. What I'm more, what mostly concerned with is materials and colors. So the following materials and colors are prohibited on building exteriors: exterior foam molding, corrugated metal, vinyl siding, plywood, exterior insulation finishing systems, and any material with a light reflection value of less than 45. I don't understand why four of those six materials would be excluded, the top four. They're pretty standard building materials, some of them Some of them are replacement for more environmentally impactful products. And, you know, you just look at vinyl siding and plywood. Plywood is, you've got a tremendous amount of exterior plywood that can be used on buildings that are architecturally pleasing. Seems like that component is pretty restrictive.
The ultimate goal of that list was to really require high-quality or exterior materials and not requiring reflective materials, which is what we would, what we would typically ask for under our guidelines. But because we can't apply the guidelines to, because the guidelines aren't objective, we created a list. The list is obviously open to recommendation, but our ultimate goal is to have a list of materials or encourage high-quality materials.
Absolutely, absolutely understand, yet I think this handcuffs a lot of designers and we're leaving product out that could be more economically and environmentally sound for the public to at least attempt to use in their projects.
If council has recommendations on the materials or the lists to amend it in some fashion, staff will take those recommendations and look at that list and see if we can incorporate it, those changes into the objectives, interim objective design standards.
I don't want to muddy the water too much on the historic preservation because I think we're not only looking at individual buildings, but we're also looking at districts as that appears to be coming more in focus for a lot of different jurisdictions. And per SEMA, SEMA's comment about they're only, they only have to be, they don't have to be registered, they only have to be acknowledged, that's always kind of sent red flags up for me, and I don't know how we work through that. As I read the ordinance, 27.66.020 applicability, it defines an individually eligible and contributor building. In this, and at the end of this statement, it says contributor building shall mean those buildings identified as such and located within downtown historic district, within the downtown historic district, as adopted by resolution to the city council, of the city council, and identified in the City of San Mateo general plan. So is that the only location in the city that can have historic buildings?
I'm not as versed in our historic.
Yeah, through the chair, the historic, I think the cleanup that we are proposing is focused on historic buildings and, you know, potential historic buildings as well that are not only within the downtown, designated downtown historic district. So this is covering the entirety of the city. Again, that is more of a cleanup that we wanted to do for the definition because currently there's a gap, and it's really associated not so much with SB 9 application, but also with like the 50% demolition limit, that, you know, when there are projects, because as part of this ordinance, we anticipate there may be homes that get rebuilt, and when that happens, or if there's significant demolition proposed, that our codes are aligned with our general plan intent. I also wanted to just point out, I think we are moving a lot into discussion territory versus questions territory, and we still have public comment spending, so.
That was kind of a question. And because it seems like there's a slight, on my part, there seems to be a little bit of ambiguity, and it's hard to understand exactly what an historic building, what, what, what defines it. And I congratulate staff trying to work through that, and I think there's still some more work that needs to be done. So that was it for me on questions and comments on both of these items. So are we ready to go to public comment? Do we have public speakers?
Through the chair, I have one more question, sorry.
No problem.
I thought of while other people were asking. Staff mentioned a SEQA review that happens sometimes. What triggers that SEQA review? Is it the, is it that when more than 50% of exterior walls are demolished, there must be a SEQA review? Or is it triggered by the historic resources report?
So SEQA review would be triggered when there is a discretionary permit. A discretionary permit is triggered, and in this case, you would need a discretionary SUP to demolish 50% or more of a structure that's over 45 years old.
So again, repeating to make sure I understand, it is the discretionary process that is triggering the SEQA review?
Correct.
Great, thank you.
Vice Chair Nutter, right now, we don't have any public commenters. I'm just going to give it a second for the attendees on Zoom. Okay, it looks like we have one public commenter. What would you like the timer to be?
Three minutes.
Three minutes, okay. Eric Holm, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hello, good evening, Commissioner. Are you able to hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the time on this, this issue and for the thoughtful consideration you've had. I want to echo some of the questions that the commissioners have already asked, which deals with the plate heights for attached, for detached units, excuse me, for detached units with a max height of 16 feet to the top of the plate line and 24 feet to the roof, that effectively removes the ability to build a two-story detached dwelling. There was a lot of discussion about this with the city's ADU guidelines, and the decision set at 16-foot plate height was very much based on a desire to restrict two-story ADU development. You can build two-story, but it's very difficult. You have to have slab-on-grade construction. And in a world where we're trying to be more sustainably minded, with a slab-on-grade construction, you have a lot more difficulties with water management. And based on the latest climate news in the last week regarding the high likelihood of severe flooding in the next 30 to 40 years on the, in the Bay Area and in California, you're either restricting an environmentally aware builder to one story with a raised building entrance, or encouraging attempts to build a two-story housing stock that will be susceptible to flooding in the future with our increased storm patterns and flooding risks. So from an environmental standpoint, I would, at a minimum, I think that the restricted building height sets us up for failure down the road when houses are susceptible to flooding and high, high water damage. I live in downtown San Mateo where the housing stock was built. My house is over 100 years old, and most of the downtown housing stock that's 100 years old has a three- or four-foot plate height, or sill height, excuse me. So, you know, we built a long time ago to mitigate for flooding, and now we seem to have forgotten that in the most dire climate time of our lives. Also, the, if the requirements of SB 9, you're effectively making, if you do a lot split, make two single-story house, two single-family homes, you should be effectively following the underlying R1, or even the R2 codes, which do allow for taller buildings. The 16-foot 24 is, is just a construct that was developed for the ADUs. But the underlying R1 height allows for 24 to 32. Then also, I'd like to mention the objective design standards that require obscure glass five feet through property line. That was something that came up in the ADU that is different from what would be required in an R1. And you also have the requirement to offset windows. So that is a, you've sort of got a belt and suspenders there to make sure no windows can look out anywhere, which makes for less desirable units. And the additional design standards that your house has to match the style from the new to old is pretty conservative and not very progressive in a design sense. Most really beautiful homes that are remodeled have a variety of styles to them if they are well executed. You also have bad homes that, or ugly homes that done that way, but also have really elegant homes. And you're, you're missing out on opportunity in basically forcing someone to design something exactly like their existing.
Eric, thank you for your comments.
Vice Chair Nutter, we don't have any more public commenters.
Seeing no one in the chambers, we'll close public comment. So what is staff looking from the commission tonight, other than our input that we've given you?
Staff is looking for any proposed recommendations you have on the ordinance, objective design standards, and code amendments before you, and then ultimately a recommendation to city council on what's before you and what changes you, you may recommend.
Okay. Does anybody have specific recommendations they would like to be included in this report? Back to council?
Through the chair.
Yes.
I have a few discussion notes.
Okay.
If you want me to go first, since I'm remote. Yeah, there's a few things that have popped up that, this is going to sound familiar, I think, from the ADU ordinance. But I will start with sort of the ministerial review process versus the discretionary review process. So there were two instances, one was unit size and one was demolition limits, where staff recommended ministerial up to a point and then discretionary. And I think, I remember from the presentation, staff was saying that staff recommends a discretionary review above 800 square feet in size because applicants can build up to the FAR limit. But above 800 square feet in size, staff was recommending discretionary review to align with the process for single-family homes and large second-story standards. However, SB 9 projects differ from single-family homes and second, large second-story additions in one way, and that is that they are to, in many cases, build duplexes or to build two units. And as we saw from 415 Fairfax, when an applicant proposes to build two units, their project is protected by the HAA and cannot be denied if they meet objective design standards. And so I worry we're setting up a situation where we're going to require projects to go through a discretionary review process, which triggers a SEQA report, when the only result of doing so is using up a lot of staff time, potentially creating false expectations within a neighborhood about what they can or cannot stop or change, potentially sow a lot of discord and division in a neighborhood when ultimately that project cannot be denied. And so my preference would be to keep this simple and to eliminate strife by having, both in terms of, in terms of demolition limits and in terms of unit sizes, that those be 100% ministerial as long as they are meeting objective design standards. Now, if a project does not want to meet the objective design standards, then that would seem like a good reason to send them through a discretionary review process. So saying that, I guess, more concisely, I think in terms of unit size, it should be ministerial up to the FAR as long as they're meeting objective design standards. For demolition unit, demolition limits, it should be 100% ministerial up to 100% as long as it's meeting objective design standards. But if they're not meeting objective design standards, then yeah, you can send it through a discretionary review process. In terms of building height, I, like the, Mr. Holm, the public commenter, have a lot of concerns about the reduction in height limit for a secondary unit for multiple reasons. When it came to the ADUs, we were talking about a situation where we already have a primary residence and when we're, in most cases, building an ADU in the backyard. And so I can understand how there may be a desire by city council and others to hide the ADU behind the primary residence by making the height limit a little bit shorter. But what happens in a scenario where an applicant demolishes their single-family home, rebuilds a duplex in its place, or rebuilds two detached units side by side, because perhaps they have a really big lot and they want to build two units along the primary street frontage side by side? Is one like the tally and one the shorty? Like, how does that work? Like, is that going to look weird? So I think we have to think through those height limits a little bit more carefully than we did with the ADU ordinance. And, and again, to keep things simple, rather than create a whole bunch of different scenarios, like if they're both the same distance setback from the front, then they can be the same height. But if they're not, or whatever, it just feels easier to say, like, have one, have the underlying zoning height limits govern how tall the structures can be. And then I think that the sustainability issues, concerns, environmental concerns raised by the, the public commenter are really important as well. In terms of the number of units, I saw from the public survey that there was like 60% of the survey respondents, although it was quite a low number of respondents, were interested in a tiered approach. I personally think a tiered approach makes a lot of sense because right now, under SB 9, a 2,400-square-foot lot could be split into two 1,200-square-foot lots, and each one of those lots could have two units built upon it. But with this sort of one-size-fits-all approach, somebody who has a 10,000-square-foot lot and splits it in half into two 5,000-square-foot lots would still only be able to build two units on each side, even though smaller lots in the city could build more in the same space. And that doesn't really make sense to me. So I think a tiered approach could, could make things a little bit more consistent throughout the city. And then in terms of like the privacy protections, I agreed with the public commenter, the glazing requirement seems in excess of what is currently required by single-family homes. If I'm understanding correctly, I feel like the window offset is enough that requiring windows to be glazed within five feet of property line seems above and beyond what we're currently requiring single-family homes to do. So I didn't think that made sense. Those are, those are my comments on the specific requirements for the SB 9 ordinance. Then when it comes to the historic cleanup, I think what we were all getting at is, there's this level of recursion in the definition right now, which is for, a property only has to be considered eligible to be listed on a historic register to be considered historic. And I think, I think for me, it seems simpler if, if the definition is tied to whether or not the properties are actually listed on a historic register. That way, if a property owner wants their property to be protected, they can get a historic evaluation, they can follow through and get it listed on the register, and then their property is protected. But just by having, having it be more broad to just properties that are eligible seems like setting up a bunch of potentially confusing scenarios, especially when it comes to SB 9, right? If a, you have a property owner who wants to utilize SB 9, but their property is not listed on a historic register, it seems like you could end up in a scenario where somebody gets a historic report that then prevents them from doing so, and I don't know, it just seems, seems like a lot more complicated. Yeah, so those are my, my comments and thoughts. Curious to hear what the other commissioners think. Thank you.
Thank you.
Through the chair. I've, and for staff, just knowing that you're taking a lot of notes and we may, we could come up here and have four different, wildly different opinions, and you're trying to figure out how to coalesce it. To make it easy, I'm pretty sure I fully, full-throatedly support everything that Commissioner Patel just said, if not always for the same, the exact same reasons, I'm going to steer in the same direction, and I'll be, try to be a bit brief in that sense. On maximum FAR or the trigger for becoming discretionary, to me, maximum FAR is pretty objective. If it's not a design standard, it's a pretty clear threshold and, you know, it's... If it's not a design standard, it's a pretty clear threshold, and, you know, it's verifiable, it's already been placed in the property, so I don't see the logic in an owner needing to get a discretionary approval to do something that's within their FAR. In terms of the number of units, the number of units that would be permitted ministerially on the split lot provisions, I also noted the community feedback. And I was also, there's a lot of great information in the staff report, there's the comparison, I think, that council asked for, with other jurisdictions. And, you know, in a lot of ways, I think we're a bit more restrictive, or let's say, in several ways, you could see that we're a bit more restrictive than what some of our neighbors are doing. And so I can understand wanting to pay attention to where they're at, but, you know, I would offer, if we're, I don't know that we really intend, as a city, to strike a more, let's say, conservative approach compared to our neighbors. Maybe we should think about balancing ourselves against them, and so if we're going to be more restrictive in some ways, maybe we'll be a little more flexible in others, and overall, it's a balanced approach. And, you know, there's really good points being made, or a really good approach to come back and look at this in a year. I think we'll be learning in a year, I think those other cities will be learning as well. And if we can try to do things a little bit different in a number of ways, then, you know, maybe we can all learn more as this process evolves. So that's my reasoning to go to three or four units ministerially on the split lot, if we're going to be more restrictive in some aspects of this than our other cities. This is one area where we could be a little more open, and to me, that seemed like a balanced approach. I won't repeat what people, commenters, or Commissioner Patel said on the overall height, just in agreement with being able to go to 24 and 32 on, really on all the structures. And so that's it on those aspects. On the historic, yeah, I think we're, I feel like I recently observed, you know, a process or a situation with 415 Fairfax that we don't want to repeat, and I don't see the state calling on us to consider eligible buildings. And I'm just very uncomfortable with the idea that anyone with the resources, subtle pun there, to pull together their own report and start, you know, casting all sorts of buildings as eligible, because they could have found someone that's willing to write that report for them. That just doesn't feel, and we, you know, I will say from my opinion, I feel like I just saw that happen. I don't know why we're wading into that territory. So I have no problem with the code cleanup, but I don't understand why we would then link that code cleanup with dragging eligible buildings into this, and then putting them in limbo through this process. So that is my feedback on that one. Interim objective standards, again, agree with what's been mentioned so far, and then I had a few other notes. Architectural features are defined in the definition section. I didn't see the term used again, and I wasn't sure, we defined a term and then we didn't use it anywhere, so I don't think I missed it, maybe I did. Architectural features themselves, in that definition, are defined as being insetts or projections of at least 18 inches. I don't think it needs to be that big. You can make a much smaller reveal or recess, frame it with accent materials, emphasize it in a different coloration, create the shadow, and I think you create an architectural feature with less than 18 inches. Dormers, I didn't always, I don't know that you always see those setback, at least one foot from the lower floor, in existing prevailing architectural styles in the city. So when you tell someone that they need to match the existing style of the building, and then sort of write a universal style guideline that might be in conflict with that existing architectural style, just concerned that that could set ourselves up for confusion. And, yeah, agreeing with the materials and colors, you know, it's felt overly prohibitive. I drove by a bunch of houses today with vinyl siding on them, so what are they supposed to do if you want them to match the architectural style in this attached unit? They can't use the material that's already there. That seemed, again, like we're creating confusion here. And then light wells, I don't know if I'm misunderstanding what a light well is, maybe that should be an added definition, but I'm pretty sure I've seen light wells on primary facades around here, and I don't think that's so bad. I don't know why that needs to be restricted. Although I will say, across the board, I understand the intent, that there's some, there's issues today that staff is trying to resolve, so certainly sympathize with the intent of the interim objective standards. I have, you know, concerns that they'll only be in existence for six to 12 months, and so just that switch for applicants could be confusing, and then if we sort of rush to get this out, and we have text in those interim objective standards that are in conflict with itself, or unclear, or just caution us, I almost wonder if we should just focus on the final ones and not do interim, but I don't want to be, you know, flippant or anything. I definitely understand what you're trying to solve for, so. And the very last thing I'll say is more, I guess, an observation, that we do have this interesting discrepancy emerging between what can be allowed in our R1 district versus an R2. And to me, the R2s are often located on the edges of neighborhoods, you know, as you transition into a commercial district, or along busier, bigger arterial roads within the neighborhood. So you tend to see an intensity of development as you go from R1 to R2, and R2 to R3, or a commercial, or something else. And we're moving in the direction where we're going to have this weird inversion, I would call it, where there's a decrease in intensity. And so I question if that's what we want. And I, very important note, I think, on these SEQUA, potential SEQUA implications of addressing this, but my own thought on the matter was if we just say anything that could be allowed, you just, anywhere that the R2 is going to effectively be more restrictive than the R1, you just say the, or the R1 SB9, just let the R1 SB9 sort of rule within the R2. And I thought maybe that was a shortcut to going through a whole process for R2. Maybe there's a simple toggle there. But I recognize that can take us a bit further afield from what we were trying to do, so that was just my thought. And those are all my comments. Thank you.
First off, I want to say thank you, staff, for all your work on this. This isn't an easy thing, and there's a lot of opinions to juggle, and also kind of uncharted territory with this. I do, a couple of things that other commissioners have mentioned, I had not really considered, especially the process aspect of the discretionary review. I do think that that could lead to conflict when the Housing Accountability Act is ultimately going to decide whether or not a project can be approved or not. And so I just want to encourage an evaluation of that process, because it could be, it could be, could be just an unnecessary point of conflict that we just don't want to unleash onto our city. So, yeah, thank you for, Commissioner Patel, thank you for mentioning that. There's a couple of things that I want to note, and they are not particularly, they're not all in order, but just small things first. So provide, I would recommend that staff provide visual examples of the outlawed materials for the objective standards to council, just to ensure that they have the necessary information to determine the suitability of that. I just, you know, they're not all, you know, design professionals, so it's not maybe something that is easy to visualize. And then with discretionary review, again, I doubt that council was considering the Housing Accountability Act and the potential for staff time involved in that. And so that's just something that should be explored a little bit more. And I understand that it feels, it feels safer to have a discretionary review, where people can get eyes on a project, but, you know, Commissioner Patel is right, these projects are going to be Housing Accountability Act projects. So that really ties our hands as far as how much we can make changes to them. And so it may end up becoming just a unnecessary, an unnecessary event for us to go through. And then I also want to second that, I believe that glazing requirements should match what is required of single-family homes. And more generally, I think that we should be, try to align this as much as possible to what's required of single-family homes, so that we don't increase this, the requirements, or make it less feasible in a way that would discourage housing being built, because there's unsavory aspects to that. And I think we just need to be careful with that, let alone just the quality of life of the people living in these new homes. One question I had, as I was listening, is for this historic definition that is proposed to be changed, what percentage of lots in San Mateo would be considered eligible for historic register? And I'm not asking you to answer that tonight, but I think that that would be something important for the council to know, because if it's like 3% of lots, maybe it's, maybe that change is not so bad. If it's basically saying, oh, all of San Mateo Park and all of Baywood are no longer eligible for SB9 units, that would be very problematic. I love those neighborhoods, they're beautiful neighborhoods, but there are historic reasons where that would be hugely problematic. Access, so one of the things I was reading through in the development standards was access. And so one access point for urban lot splits is that an access corridor or driveway with a width of at least 10 feet shall be required to allow for adequate emergency vehicle access. So that requirement would make sense for a larger lot that's turning into a flag lot, a lot that's, you know, requires parking, and a lot that is, you know, beyond a fire truck's capability of servicing. But for a smaller urban lot that does not require parking within, you know, a half-mile of a train station, it may, it would be a waste of usable space if there's no parking required, and that access is not necessary from a firefighting perspective. And so I think that that definitely needs to be aligned completely with actual fire marshal standards, and not just blanket applied to projects that would become more of an urban, non-car, non-automobile-focused type property, as the state law allows. Okay. The next, the next comments I have are on the unit size limits. And I want, first off, I want to applaud staff, and I want to applaud council, for making this similar to the ADU ordinances, where exceeding FAR, or not exceeding, is meeting FAR for units is acceptable. I think that that's, I think that's a good thing to do. Outside of some of our very, of our larger lot properties, that's not going to really matter a whole lot, the, just based on what our floor area ratios are currently. I love urban planning, I love urban design, I do not like floor area ratios whatsoever. They are an esoteric pseudoscience, which a general public can't look at immediately and know what they mean. And it just serves to perpetuate existing, stale, non, you know, basically no change. So that just, I'm just going to put that out there. That being said, I would prefer to see the allowance for SB9 units in excess of 800 square feet, as determined by the floor area ratio, coupled with a provision that would allow one unit per lot to be at least 1,200 square feet, as opposed to 800 square feet, while the second unit could be 800 per the state minimum. In instances where it would exceed the floor area ratio slightly, it would do so not much more than what is currently allowed by state ADU law, where it's possible for an ADU to exceed FAR by 800 square feet, just based on, you know, typical lot sizes. Why is this important? Why am I a proponent of this? There has been a lot of uproar over the demolition of single-family homes to replace them with larger single-family homes. And, you know, this is common, it's very common in Hillsborough. There's also near constant requests for more family-sized units, basically three-bedroom homes. Now, if a person wants to replace their single-family home with a different single-family home, that's fine. However, you know, it gets pushed back from some people who are, say, oh, we don't want McMansions and stuff like that. It also could expose some, I don't know, hypocrisy, where someone who's okay with that, but not okay with, with, you know, smaller units, even family-sized units, to be basically same-massing. I just think that that's, that's not something that our city should be making the most attractive option, considering our housing crisis. So I would estimate that most existing homes do not exceed FAR, and may be far below it, as they are currently. But right now, the baseline state ADU law allows homeowners to tear down their single-family home and build an FAR-maximizing house, and then tack on an additional 800-square-foot ADU on top of that. So our local ADU law provides a better alternative, I think, because it encourages houses to stay in place, and then allows the homeowner to build a larger ADU. You know, say, there's a lot of small, like, 1,000-square-foot or less houses that are on lots. There's an incentive without our current ADU law for homeowners to demolish those cute little homes, and replace them with a big house, and then an ADU. Our new ADU ordinance is good in the sense that it encourages homeowners to keep those smaller homes, and then build, you know, an ADU up to the floor area ratio. I think that's a, I think that's a great thing. I think that we could build on that with this, where we continue to encourage more moderate family-sized units, and we would do that, we could do that by allowing one unit per lot to be at least 1,200 square feet, irrespective of the FAR. And again, it would be very similar in volume to what state ADU plus FAR allows. To me, that's a much, much more desirable outcome than ministerial McMansions coupled with, you know, 800-square-foot ADU. So I think that that's just something to consider. I think that would provide better outcomes when a house does get demolished and re- I think that would provide better outcomes when a house does get demolished and replaced by something. Again, people are asking for more family units. And so that's where I think a good law, local law, would head. You know, it's not super-conservative, but it's not, you know, a free-for-all. And it also meets some of the stated local goals of family housing. And then the other comment I wanted to have was just regarding the R2 comparison. Just broadly, I think incremental development is really important for cities to function properly and have functioning housing markets. Incremental development is the concept that each neighborhood and area of the city should be allowed to grow to at least the next increment of development. And that has become increasingly seen as a much better alternative to our, you know, 20th-century current planning situation across most American cities. This is how all cities grew prior to the 20th-century zoning experiment. That's why you see older neighborhoods that are more eclectic. And I think that, you know, our current zoning experiment has pretty much been very bad in a number of social ways. And I think that the state has made incremental development legal with SB9 and the state ADU laws for the R1 sections of the city. Now, that's probably where a lot of the greatest opposition is to incremental development from a resident basis. And I can see why the state went in and intervened. And it also being a singular housing market with other cities on the peninsula and the Bay Area, it's hard for one city to do something radically different. That being said, I think that the rest of the city should also be allowed to grow to the next increment of development. And I think the place types menu shown in the general plan update documents illustrates that happening for non-R1 zones. But that being said, I wouldn't oppose conforming all residentially-zoned land to this local SB9 ordinance at some point because that would encourage development that's generally more focused towards our transit corridor, which is also somewhat a contrasting, in some ways, in some areas, a contrasting goal for development. And those are my general and specific inputs for this. So I hope that's helpful.
Thank you, fellow commissioners. So the ordinance known as the Two-Unit Development Overlay District, I understand, is... the goal of the city currently is to use it almost as an interim or starting point to address SB9, leaving the city as much flexibility as they feel they need to implement the law and give the public the opportunity to develop their properties under the new state law. I also understand that there is a goal to wait a year or 18 months to see how it starts to shake out with the public and then address whatever concerns and modifications that are apparent that the public wants. My only concern with that scenario is those are good intentions, but a lot of times things go much further along and we're not able to get them, you know, within a year or two because you might not have enough knowledge, you might not have enough applications, you might not have the time to address it. That's part of my concern with doing it this way, but I understand why you have to. I'm just hoping that we can get some legitimate information back in a year, year and a half where you might have better information to incorporate some more guidelines. I fully support everything that my fellow commissioners have said this evening. My concern is this is, these are ordinances and amendments and resolutions that we are voting on this evening, correct? So with all of the comments that have been made, are we able to vote on these amendments as they are and have staff present the concerns to the council? Because we obviously aren't going to sit here and incorporate these comments tonight. And is that staff's recommendation, how we go forward?
To the chair, staff would recommend if the planning commission is able to make a motion. In general, it sounds like there are a few particular topics that you would like the city council to consider before they actually act on the ordinance. So it is possible, if you're able to craft a motion, to recommend approval of the draft ordinance, but with the specific changes around allowing for ministerial approval of unit sizes that are larger than 800 square feet, as long as they meet the underlying FAR, or the height limits being addressed and the shorter height limits not being imposed on the second unit unless they're within a particular setback. So if you have a motion where you can recommend approval of the ordinance, but then specify what changes you would like to see in the draft, we could certainly present that to city council.
Well, currently, do you have enough clear direction and input to highlight the areas that have been brought to the table tonight?
Through the chair, I've been taking notes and I think I got potentially all of them. The one that strikes me as, I wasn't quite sure of a clear recommendation, was the one that, I believe it was Commissioner Nugent, mentioned about access. And that requiring a 10-foot-wide access to a second unit, because it seems like there might be a need for that if it's required for fire access. So I guess I'm just trying to figure out, what is the exact ask for that one?
Yes. Thank you for asking for clarification. So fire access is required for a fire truck to get closer to a structure when that structure is generally about 100 feet from the right-of-way or for whatever access road the fire truck has. This is just coming off from my memory, so I could be wrong. What I'm concerned about is that the access requirement would be unnecessary in smaller And so it would just, it would just seem to be an unnecessary inclusion in the ordinance.
And through the chair, that could be an amendment to the draft ordinance saying that access, the 10-foot access, be provided only where necessary for fire or parking. So that could be a simple amendment.
Makes a lot of sense. So to avoid a continuation of this issue or item, the step going forward would be to take a vote. Do all of these ordinances and amended chapter and design standard family guidelines get voted on at one time, or do we vote on them individually? They're all just one package?
Through the chair, I think it's just like the ADU ordinance, where we made a little bullet point list.
Yeah, it depends on the motion maker, Commissioner, Vice Chair Ebner. So it could be that you break it down into three if there is, if you have different recommendations on each, or you could take them collectively, but just lay out what is the decision of the commission or the recommendation of the commission on each one.
Okay. Since we're rapidly approaching the magical hour of 11:00 PM where we need to have buy-in from commissioners if they want to continue this discussion, we need to make that decision now. Yet I want to be clear on what is going to give staff the current or the correct amount of information to include as part of the presentation to council, however we decide. Do you need anything else from us?
We do need a motion.
Correct. You need a motion, but you have, we are passing, if we pass these items without any changes to them, that is our only route at this point. We're not going to sit here and list all of the changes, all of the concerns.
Through the chair, I can try to make a motion. If you want me to.
Okay, then let's do it. I'm sorry, is everybody ready to move forward with a motion on these items?
Through the chair, may I ask one more question? I think I was open, and I believe other commissioners are open, to a tiered approach in terms of number of units permitted on a lot split. But what we did not discuss is specific numbers for that tiered approach. And so maybe we would just, we could stay in the motion. We would leave that to staff's discretion to figure out what the tiered approach would be. Does that sound okay to everybody else?
I'm fine with that. Yeah. So Seema, since you are the most gifted note taker, although there are another five people here in the room who are trying to equal you, would you like to give this a shot?
Through the chair, sure. Let me take a first stab.
Is everybody okay? We're going to hit 11 o'clock here in three minutes. Everybody's good to finish this?
Yeah, let's just get staff.
Perfect, good, good. Okay.
I motion to adopt an ordinance and associated text amendments to amend the San Mateo Municipal Code to add Chapter 27.21, Two-Unit Development Overlay District, to implement the provisions of SB9, provided the following changes. One, that demolition limits are increased to 100% with ministerial approval, provided the project conforms to objective design standards. That unit sizes are, that unit sizes are allowed up to the FAR with ministerial approval, provided that those projects conform to objective design standards. And that at least one unit be permitted to be sized at a minimum of 1,200 square feet, even if it exceeds the floor area ratio. That the number of units built after a lot split are based on a tiered approach. That the building heights of the units are governed by the underlying building height specified by the zoning. That from the privacy requirements are changed such that window glazing is not required. And that a 10-foot-wide access path is only required when necessary for fire access or for parking.
Through the chair, if I could confirm with Laura, the glazing requirement, is that in the interim ordinance or is that in the draft ordinance? The interim objective design standards or draft ordinance?
I believe the glazing is in the ODS. Let me double-check, though.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioner Patel.
The glazing is in the interim objective design standards document.
Do I need to repeat that motion or can I amend my motion to remove the glazing?
Through the chair, you can amend the motion to say that the glazing is for bullet point number three for the interim design standards.
Correct. I would like to amend my previously stated motion to clarify that the glazing is for bullet point three.
Accepted.
Through the chair, Commissioner Patel, would you also like to move on bullet point number two and three, or would you like to do that as a separate motion?
I would like to also make a motion or amend my previous motion to include adopting a resolution to establish interim objective design standards for single-family and duplex development, provided, as previously noted, that the glazing requirements are removed. And then I would like to do the other one separately.
And, go ahead, Martin.
I wanted to, never done this before, potentially second that motion with a friendly amendment. Commissioner Patel, unless you intended to do this in the second bullet, that we not include individually-eligible buildings within the...
I wanted to do that separately.
Okay, sorry, then I retract my friendly amendment and just second, just second it.
Okay. So currently, we've heard a recommendation to adopt an ordinance to add Chapter 27.21 and including, and we've also heard the terminology to adopt a resolution to establish the interim objective design standards. Does everybody understand that that is what we are doing now?
Yes.
Okay. So we can vote on those two components concurrently? Can you please?
The motion needs a second.
Yes. Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
I did second it. Sorry. I withdrew the friendly amendment to my second team and just seconded it as it was...
I'll retract my second.
It has three motions.
So Chair Williams is currently absent. Vice Chair Ebner?
Yes.
Commissioner Nugent?
Yes.
Commissioner Patel?
Yes.
And Commissioner Wiggins?
Yes.
Okay, that passes 4-0 with one absence from the chair. Now the historic preservation.
Through the chair, can I just make a comment on the ordinance, the recommendation we just passed?
Sure.
So I just, one of the things about the FAR and the unit size I wanted to note is that, you know, it is possible for someone to do that with building two single-family homes and then building ADUs after the fact. And so this just cleans up that workaround.
Perfect. Thank you for your input. Hello?
Yes, I'm just, sorry, I'm trying to figure out how to phrase this. I motion to amend Chapter 27.66, Historic Preservation, to update the definition of individually-eligible buildings, to only include buildings that are listed on the national or state register of historic resources. That might not have been the best way to say that. So if nobody wants to second that and then present an alternative, that might be better.
Through the chair, I think it would be acceptable to just recommend denial of that particular change.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I'm struggling with that myself. Okay. Does any, is...
Well, do we want to recommend that the, that the general plan language be changed to match the zoning language? Because I think that's what we were all kind of getting at.
I would say that that ventures into general plan GOPA's territory, which is currently under a separate discussion. So I probably would discourage recommending changes to our draft general plan or our general plan language.
Great. How about if I withdraw my previous motion and motion to make a recommendation to City Council to not amend Chapter 27.66 Historic Preservation to update the definition of individually eligible buildings?
Mr. Nugent?
So this is just a question, or a request or question for staff. So it's getting late and I want to make sure that I fully understand what it is that we're changing, we would be changing in the, in the current ordinance. So I'm going back and forth between the, in the packet. And just, just walk me through it one more time so I'm, it's clear.
So you're asking what the proposed amendment would be or why we need it?
So what is existing and then what does, what does it go to?
So the definition of a historical building in the general plan is very broad. It includes all buildings that are listed in the 89 survey, which are, most of them are only eligible and not listed. We have very actual few buildings that are listed on the, on the National or State, even downtown buildings, only a few. It also includes the contributor buildings as adopted by resolution of the City Council in the past. And the general plan also includes those buildings found to be historic through a subsequent Historic Resources Report. The, so that's the general plan. The municipal code is very narrow. It's only, the definition of a historic building, which is an individually eligible building, only includes those buildings on the 89 survey and those buildings found to be contributor buildings. It does not include buildings found to be historic through an HRE. So...
I'm sorry, what was that?
Sorry?
It does not include what?
It does not include buildings to found, it does not include buildings found to be historic through a historic evaluation report. So the proposal is to align the definition of what a historical building is in the general plan, which is more broad, by updating our definitions in the municipal code. It also follows current practices with what staff does right now. Let's say you have a house that's over 50 years old and you're proposing to demolish it. That action needs a special use permit in the city. And we use that special use permit to ask for an historic evaluation of the property to see what the historic value of that building is. And then if that building comes back as historic and the property owner still wants to demolish it, that action could be allowed, but it would be to the discretion, I believe, of City Council or Planning Commission. So there, there's just an extra level of review. So it's not so much prohibiting such demolition, but just having the oversight to make sure that the city isn't removing potentially historic houses or structures without due consideration. So that's kind of where we're coming from and please clarify.
Through the chair, as I mentioned, this is for, as staff was proposing it, it was a tweak to align the zoning ordinance with the general plan intent, really to make sure that our practice and our intent of our general plan was codified accurately so there was no confusion. It, it doesn't directly have, you know, bearing on SB 9. I know there is that question about just demolitions and how that is processed. The state actually says that demolitions up to 25% would be ministerial. We actually went further than that because our code currently allows for 50%. But really, it's to align the city's definition in the general plan of what a historic resource is with the zoning ordinance.
Through the chair, but this is coming up because SB 9 does not apply to historic resources and specifically does not apply to locally designated historic resources. And I think that's why there is so much scrutiny by the Planning Commission right now on this cleanup. Because whatever happens with this cleanup is going to affect where SB 9 can be applied in the city.
Yes. That's a fair comment.
Correct. It's exceedingly clear that historic preservation, be it individual buildings or districts, is going to be a point of discussion, heated debate going forward. And to alleviate any concerns or confusion with the public, I, for one, currently think it's extremely important to set the guidelines as clear as possible. Because especially when you're looking at districts, that can have huge impacts on our city. So I understand that this is supposed to just do an alignment. I get it. And it might work, but it's going to be challenged by someone. And I'm worried that, you know, so much time and energy is going to be put into it and questioned and pushed on you guys, that it's going to become considerably less manageable at some point. That's my observation. I don't know if it's true or not, but I think it's going to become a very contentious situation.
Through the chair, that's absolutely a fair point. I mean, we were trying, our staff's goal was to align our practice and our general plan with the codes, but if there are, and, you know, based on this conversation, it's apparent that there are larger issues that may need to be fleshed out. So I believe Commissioner Patel has made a motion to not amend this code section and if the commission... Uh, sorry, to, to, was it to deny or to deny the amendment? That's certainly something we can take to council or see where, if there's further policy guidance given by council on this topic.
So I honestly think that, that this commission's concerns are, are trying to make sure that we are able to align our city guidelines with current state laws. And I think it's extremely important that we get there soon. So, Seema, would you like to be the one who recommends to? Now, I thought if you recommended to deny, you had to have an alternative solution for that denial, no?
Sorry, I turned it off. Through the chair, that's not necessary in this particular case because to deny would be just that there would be no change to that section.
Okay.
So this will, you know, this recommendation will go to the City Council. I guess what's hard for me is it's hard for me to visualize what the implications of this change would have for the city of San Mateo. I don't know, I can't, by reading this, I can't tell, does that mean like 60% of the city then becomes, you know, individually eligible just based on the fact that the city is, has a very old housing stock? Or is it, what is it that's, that's coming? What are the implications procedurally? And, and, you know, where, where does that land for, you know, large swaths of our neighborhoods?
Through the chair, procedurally, we do not see a change because as, you know, we shared that this is our practice, that we are applying the general plan. I do understand that there could be ramifications for, you know, which projects can move forward under SB 9. Or not, however, you know, we have an existing practice. The reports are prepared by cities consultant that are accepted by staff. We are, we, and it's not just based on the age of the building. It's based on the criteria that's listed under the California, for its eligibility based on the four criteria for being registered on the California list. So, you know, it's hard to say how many homes could be individually eligible because we don't have that analysis, we don't have that complete survey. But materially, we, as we've pointed out, SB 9 is so new, we are going to come back within a year. If we start to see issues, we, or as soon as we process 10 SB 9 applications. So if this does become a concern or if there's different policy guidance on what should be, how should a historic resource be defined? You know, those could, those would be part of the discussions, even as part of the general plan update. So staff's, the ramifications in the near term, staff does not see any issues with this amendment because it would align with our current practice.
So your practices are, are based on the general plan because it's the overriding governing document?
That's correct.
So it, I guess to me, it's, it's hard to understand, you know, and maybe this is something that could be visualized or it just, the implications of this, I just, I don't, I don't know what it is. And maybe it's, maybe it's nothing because you already are, are under these practices and, and you're, you just have to align with the general plan. But again, I, my worry is that, you know, and maybe this is uncalled for because I, I have no, I have no sense of, of what the scope is for this. But my worry is that whole neighborhoods that are of a certain type get eliminated or excluded out of, you know, being eligible for SB 9, similar to Woodside claiming that themselves, they're a mountain lion habitat. And so like this is, this is my fear and I know that like the intent isn't there, but I just, I just, I can't, I don't understand, like I don't have a good confidence in what, what the implications are.
And through the chair, I see Laura wants to talk to it as well, but my understanding is that the change is only for individually eligible buildings. Like we are not talking about districts in this context. It's focused on individually eligible buildings and that's where the clarity lies. It's not going to affect entire districts and what their designation has to be. So hopefully that helps.
And then to build off what Manira said, HREs are done property by property. And the report is just, whether a report is required or not is based on those two qualifying criteria, how old are you and how much demolition are you proposing? But if a building is considered individually eligible, you have to meet those criteria listed in SEQA and they're very, pretty standard criteria. And our, our consultant goes through those criteria and how a house does or does not meet that criteria. So it's more objectives than just blanket saying because you're over a certain age, you are just individually eligible. There are criteria you have to meet.
So, I'm sorry, Martin, de jettison. Do we want to make a motion on this issue and determine if we want to send this to the council or not?
Through the chair, there is already a motion on the table, so I think it, yeah, it wasn't seconded, so perhaps you would want to ask for a second. If there's no second, then the motion would die and the commission would have to move, make a different motion.
Do we have a second?
Sorry, was the motion to? It was a particular text amendment? That was the motion, right?
No, the motion, so...
He withdrew that one.
Let me recap if, and the staff can correct me if I'm wrong. But, so we have a broad general plan definition and a narrow zoning code. Right now, the general plan overrides the zoning code. And I had originally made a motion to update the general plan to match the zoning code. And staff explained that really gets into general plan territory and there's already a general plan process happening right now and this meeting is perhaps not the right venue to make that kind of change. That might be better left to the general plan subcommittee to be making recommendations. So I withdrew that motion and made a second motion simply to recommend to City Council not amending Chapter 27.66. So basically, not making any changes from how, how things currently are.
I'll second that motion.
So we'll take a vote?
Yes. Chair Williams is absent. Vice Chair Nutter?
I support that denial.
Commissioner Nugent?
Yes.
And Commissioner Patel?
Yes.
And Commissioner Wiggins?
Yes.
Thank you. That's the end of that item. Do we have any updates?
Yes, through the chair. Excuse me. A few quick updates. So for the September Planning Commission meetings, we are going to be holding, we're going to be replacing the regularly scheduled meetings with special meetings that start at 6:00 PM so that we can cover the general plan goals, policies, and actions at those meetings. So those are coming up here shortly. On September 1st, there is a neighborhood meeting coming up for a public-private partnership project between the city and a developer to do a housing and office mixed-use development at the Talbot site in downtown. So that'll be a neighborhood meeting. And then I believe our director has some updates on the Planning Commission handbook.
So on September 6th, we have scheduled for City Council review and sort of an update, I would say a consolidation of the guidance for planning commissioners. So some of you may remember back in November of 2021, we did go to the City Council and ask for clarified guidance on the role of the commission. They made very few directional changes, but they did direct us to make the guidance that you all get very concise and to consolidate it with our rules and procedures if that was a possibility. And so they will be reviewing that item. We did look at the handbook with the rules and procedures and found a lot of overlap and also there's some central documents out there that I think are a little more comprehensive and current than what we had. So we will be bringing that to council to discuss and adopt a resolution if they see fit to amend the rules and procedures.
With that, anything from Seema or other commissioners here?
Just a quick question or clarification. So the, the neighborhood meeting for the Talbot site, that's not a, that's not a pre-application meeting, that's, that's just something for us to be aware of?
That is correct. That's a neighborhood meeting that precedes the Planning Commission study session on the pre-application.
Thank you.
Seema, nothing from you?
Nope. Thank you.
Close the meeting. Thank you all.
Thanks, everyone. Good night.
Good morning.